Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, November 12th, 2019 Business Meeting of the Olympia City Council. For the record, we have a quorum. All council members are present. Before we approve tonight's agenda, please note that Items 2A and Item 4E were pulled for future action. With that, I need a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Second. On favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. We have -- that takes us right to a public comment this evening. So, this is a portion of the evening where citizens may address the City Council regarding items related to city business, including items on tonight's agenda, so that the City Council can maintain impartiality in the appearance of fairness in upcoming matters and comply with state law. I just want to note that this time of the year, we have many, many future public hearings and many that have happened in the last 45 days. So if you signed up on this sheet, I'm assuming you looked at all those different public hearings and understand that you cannot speak to those this evening as well. We have a countdown clock. It's over my right shoulder. It's a three-minute limit on folks. We have a 30-minute set aside at the beginning of every council meeting. With any overflow, we add additional time after our business meeting. We do have 13 people signed up. If people are expeditious tonight, we can probably get through that list in our first 30 minutes, which is our preference. There's a lot of people that have already spoken to us in the last 30 days, and so I'm trying to reorder the list so that we get not just people that haven't spoken earlier on our public comment period, but as well mixing up the topics. So I'm going to start. I'll call up three names, and you can stage yourself over here. That also helps to make these quicker as we call your names. I will start with Heather Spradlin, followed by Malloria Kennedy, followed by John Loysen or LaCoysen?
Loysen.
All right. So Heather Spradlin.
Good evening. This is my first time speaking at a City Council, so I'm a bit informal with my notes. I come to you as a resident of a complex and also as a property manager in downtown Olympia at 711 and 811 13th Avenue Southeast. Behind our property is the Union Pacific Railroad, where a lot of encampments are. And one of our biggest concerns, and what prompted me to come here tonight, was the fires. The last few days, I've had several tenants that have called and complained about the fires, the smell, and the noises that are being made down there at all hours of the night. Actually had a note posted on my office door complaining about the fires and the smells and their concerns for safety because the hillside goes right up to the back of our property, which isn't very far from the building itself. So in addition to the fires, the hammering noise, the banging, the chopping, digging out the hillsides where stuff will wash out, yelling and fighting, cursing. Six weeks ago, I had tenants calling me alarmed that they thought a woman was being raped down on the railroad tracks because she was yelling for help, that she was being hurt. Police did respond to it. I don't ultimately know what came of it because it wasn't on our property, but it's been an ongoing concern about the activity that's down there because none of them have moved along. So when I've called for OPD, they either respond during the day, OFD will come out and make sure that the hillside itself isn't on fire, but they haven't asked anyone to put out the fires. And continuing to get concerns from tenants and telling them, "I'm sorry, it's not on our property, it's not our problem," isn't a sufficient answer because they're like, "Well, I'm just tired of smelling this and hearing this. We're just going to leave." So we're losing residents, I'm losing my neighbors, because it isn't being addressed. In addition to that, on the property, because of they're all down there on the bottom of the hillside, they can walk up into our property and easily escape through the trees and the bush and stuff like that. There have been car prowls. I've had storage bins that have been broken into. We regularly get our dumpsters vandalized, whether they be tagged with graffiti or people just rifling through them and leaving the garbage everywhere for me to pick up. Drug paraphernalia, whether it's baggies, broken glass, needles found on the property left by people's cars or the bottom of the foots, the stairwells. I've had feces on the stairwells because people just taking a corner to defecate. Last year, we had our mailboxes vandalized. People's mail were stolen, including kids' gift cards. Like you could see the cards being left behind, like shredded open. And it's really unfortunate because I've worked there for six years, and just in the last two to three years, it's been escalating. I've called OPD and, like I said, and OFD, and they say that they'll come look at it, but usually that their hands are tied.
Thank you. Thank you. You can leave written comments as well with Debbie Sullivan over here this evening, and I encourage you to do that.
Thank you.
Next, I have John LaCoysen?
Loysen.
Loysen. Oh, I'm sorry.
I was third.
Thank you very much. Malloria Kennedy, followed by John Loysen.
Not that it matters, Mayor Selby, but my name's pronounced Mallory. That's like the eighth time you've mispronounced my name.
It's spelled M-A-L-O-R-I-A?
E. Mallory, like food calorie, but with an M.
Okay.
Yep. Thanks. So I'm here to speak about justice for Yvonne McDonald. We've asked you guys to read the police report yourselves a few times, and I can kind of tell that you haven't just from lack of movement around her investigation. So we've kind of brought it to you tonight. So I'm going to go ahead and just get into that. So this is the narrative from the detective that was assigned the case. "On August 7th, 2018, at approximately 13:30, I was activated to conduct follow-up inquiries involving an investigation that started as a welfare check at 902 Division Street Northwest. I learned that at 07:08 hours, Henry Morales, a City of Olympia Police Street Sweeper, called 911 and informed the call receiver that there was a female lying on the porch, unknown if she was sleeping or unconscious, and she is half-dressed. I later contacted Morales and conducted a telephonic interview where he stated that he was performing his normal street sweeper route and was traveling northbound on Division Street Northwest when he discovered a mailbox in the road, approximately three feet from the street's gutter. Morales stated that he stopped his sweeper, exited the vehicle, and moved the mailbox onto the sidewalk. Once on the sidewalk, Morales observed a purse with a card and ID and checkbook next to it. Morales stated that as he looked up from the purse, he observed a person, later identified as Yvonne McDonald, laying in the yard to the left of the front porch, just in front of a bush or a tree. Morales stated that Yvonne was on her back, with her feet oriented to the south, her head to the north, her face looking away from him. Morales said that Yvonne's shirt was open and her pants and underwear were down below her knees. Morales said that he was on the sidewalk, parallel to Division Street Northwest, approximately 15 feet from Yvonne's location, and did not approach her and did not see any blood or injuries. Morales stated that once he observed Yvonne's chest rise and fall and determined that she was breathing, he returned to his sweeper, called 911, and continued his route northbound to Conger Road Northwest. Morales turned onto Conger Road Northwest and completed a lap that brought him back to 902 Division Street Northwest, where he observed law enforcement arriving at the address. When I asked Morales if he had any idea what happened to Yvonne, he stated, 'I don't know if this is anyone's fault.'"
Thank you. I think I figured out. Someone else signed up for you, so they spelled your name wrong because there's two other people have the same writing. I can show you that afterwards. All right. So John Loysen, followed by Ken Birch.
It's my first time also. So good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the City Council. Although I very much respect my fellow speakers' anonymity, I do not choose to use that. My name is John Loysen. I'm the Chief Executive Officer of the Loysen Group. I've lived in Olympia since roughly September 22nd, 1973. I come to you this evening with just some simple insight with hopes of speaking out as a catalyst for change. Just a couple of simple questions. The answers are for you guys, mind you, not for me. How do you feel when you drive around the city of Olympia with things that are going on with regards to our homeless population and the different things throughout our community? How do your kids feel, your neighbors? Again, these answers are for you guys to just kind of self-internallyize and think to yourselves, how often and how many times a day is enough enough? We're all asking for some change here, and a couple of you are in some unique positions to kind of rock the boat and then jump ship, if you will. Since you're not looking to do reelection, you can have this freedom to do the right thing, and that could be your greatest achievement. I would very much like to see that happen. As we look around these chambers, many of us have concerns about safety and well-being when it comes to our homeless. I've heard them referred to as animals. By giving them every resource, you are in fact treating them as animals, at the very least pets. If you give them the dignity to help them up and out of the situation they're in, that would truly be treating them as human beings. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ken Birch, followed by Candy Mercer, followed by Thomas Annie.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, thank you. Continuing the reading of the police report. "At 07:24 hours, Officer Reicher arrived on scene and observed Yvonne with her shirt undone, her bra exposed, and her pants and underwear down around her ankles. Officer Reicher noted that Yvonne's feet were on the stairs leading to the house with her head on the ground. Yvonne's shoes were off and on the right side of the stairs approximately eight feet away from her body. Officer Reicher could see that Yvonne was breathing and initially thought that she was either sleeping or passed out from over-intoxication. Prior to approaching Yvonne's position, Officer Reicher looked in her purse and found her ID in a partially consumed bottle of vodka. Officer Reicher approached Yvonne and noticed that she had a laceration on her chin and had ants crawling under exposed stomach and pelvic region, but did not observe any other trauma. Based on Yvonne's condition, Officer Reicher requested a medical response from basic life support, which was later upgraded to advanced life support, ALS, supposed to be LS. Based on Yvonne's condition, once paramedics arrived on scene, they evaluated her condition and relayed to Officer Reicher that there did not appear to be any other signs of trauma on her body, but located what they thought may be track marks on her arm, which would be signs of someone that uses nicotine narcotics. It was later determined that Yvonne did not have track marks on her arm, but had dirt on her body that presented as either bruising or scars."
Thank you. I've got Candy Mercer, followed by Thomas Annie, followed by Talana Reed.
Thank you, council. I'm going to start tonight with another example of how tone deaf the City Council has been. Councilmember Rollins, you attended a conference on homelessness last week. You went to a session called Decolonizing Homelessness. Councilmember Rollins is a good person with a huge heart. I have no doubt of this. But I do not think you realize how insensitive and how even insulting this is to poor people. Decolonizing homelessness is something that does not matter to us who are struggling with the housing or substance abuse issues. It's the furthest thing from our mind. We don't need sacred spaces to honor our trauma. We need help with rent. We do not need cultural competency. We need to see competent change in policy that incentivizes affordable housing. There are three other sessions Councilmember Rollins could have attended. One had a focus on homelessness in youth. Another was on medication-assisted treatment for opiate addiction. The third session was on the practice called diversion, which is basically working with people to identify their resources and get their problems solved. Any of these would have been way more helpful for Olympia than decolonizing homelessness. This week, we had a murder and a serious assault downtown. Meg Martin of Interfaith Work Shelter says that 12 people have died this year. We have areas of the city like 4th Avenue Bridge Encampment, the Wheeler Street Encampment, and of course, the jungle, that are no-go black boxes. We do not know who is in these camps or what they are doing. I am making contacts with campers who have warned me that I had better not go into those camps unless I have an escort. This is ridiculous. I am nervous speaking to council. You can see it. It's not that I'm afraid of public speaking. It's afraid that I'm afraid of -- it's because I'm afraid of retribution. I do not want a fierce street justice for advocating for law enforcement on basic issues. We must have frequent and friendly police presence in these camps. The vulnerable will welcome it, and those preying on the vulnerable will not, and they should be made to feel uncomfortable. I am hearing some shocking stories, and I'm being warned about turf wars that are emerging. I don't have backup on it yet, but I'm working on it. Again, I also ask the council to comment on the objections that the Squawson Tribe has over the 4th Avenue Bridge Encampment.
Thank you.
Councilmember Rollins, if you truly want to decolonize homelessness, why are you allowing the 4th Avenue Bridge Camp to stay?
I've got Thomas Annie, followed by Talana Reed.
I'm going to continue by reading the sworn testimony by Olympia Police Officer Jordan Reicher, who was the responding officer at the scene of Yvonne McDonald's death. "On 8/7/18, at about 07:08 hours, I was dispatched to a welfare check at 902 Division Street Northwest. The calling party was Henry Morales, who was a street sweeper for the City of Olympia. Henry called about a female lying on the ground at the address that was only partially dressed. Upon my arrival, I observed a female, later identified as Yvonne McDonald, lying on the ground in front of 902 Division Street. Yvonne only had a bra on and her pants were down around her ankles. Yvonne's feet were up on the stairs of the house and her head was down on the ground. Yvonne appeared to be sleeping, and I could see she was breathing. I found Yvonne's purse near her, which was open. Inside her purse, I located her identification and a partially opened bottle of vodka. Based on Yvonne's status, I requested medics to respond. When medics arrived, Yvonne was non-responsive. Yvonne had small ants crawling all over her, and it appeared that she had a cut on the bottom of her chin. I did not observe any other injuries on her. Medics stated to me that it appeared that Yvonne did not have any other trauma, but that she had track marks on her arms, as if she had used narcotics. I took photographs of the scene and Yvonne. At a later time, I attached them to the case file. ALS medics transported Yvonne to the hospital for treatment. I was not able to speak with her or get any statements due to her condition. I checked 902 Division Street and observed that the house was vacant and appeared to be under renovation. The address on the checkbook for Yvonne was 505 Division Street Northwest, Unit 94. Dispatch had several 911 calls from that location in reference to public services and follows with Yvonne. Case status is closed, resolved as information only. I certify, declare, under penalty of perjury, under the laws of the State of Washington, that the foregoing is true and correct, RCW 9A.72.085. I am entering my authorized user ID and password to authenticate it." Again, that's sworn testimony from Officer Jordan Reicher. Thank you.
Thank you. Talana Reed, followed by Mae Flanagan.
So basically, what has been read, obviously, is from the street sweeper and the first responding officer. There were three men that had contact with my aunt, known, three known men that had contact with my aunt the day of her death. And I just, I wanted to respond to Councilmember Gilman's comment to me last week about providing new evidence. I've tried to meet with detectives, the police chief, and they've all refused to meet with me to get the evidence that I have. I'm available anytime. I would like to know how this was a thorough investigation. Henry Morales said her ID was outside of her purse near the curb. That sworn statement from the officer says it was near her body. Her purse was near her body with the ID inside of it. Henry Morales also said that she was in the lawn, on the lawn, and that, and then Officer Jordan Reicher said that her feet were on the stairs and her head was on the ground. I have GPS records that show, first of all, that Henry Morales arrived before 7:00 AM and stopped his vehicle at the scene. He also stayed there until right before the officer got there, unlike he reported to the detective. Who moved her purse? Who moved her body? And who took her clothing off from the time he says he left to the time the officer got there? Yvonne McDonald was unconscious when they, while she was there. She was brain-dead by the time she got to the hospital. She obviously suffered trauma. The coroner has reported that she died due to blunt force trauma, excessive bleeding due to blunt force trauma. The doctors that treated her said the same thing. The only difference is that the coroner stated that her injuries were consistent with a fall. Well, the medical doctors who worked on her the entire time, from the time she got to the hospital till her death, said that there's no way she could have got those injuries from a fall. Where she didn't fall off of a cliff. Someone caused those injuries to her, and it needs to be investigated. You're going to hear from the paramedic, who also says that he found her, they pulled her out of the bushes. And then they drug, they, I mean, how do you pull somebody out of the bushes? The officer never provided my aunt with first aid. They're mandated to do that. Why didn't they provide my aunt with aid? And what were they doing there for over an hour before they transported her to the hospital? That's why I'm here, week after week. Not because I have nothing better to do or I'm just angry at the world. I want this properly investigated. She deserves justice.
Thank you. Mae Flanagan, followed by Sarah Joseph, followed by Renee Dars.
Good evening, City Councilmembers, and congratulations, Mayor Selby. I am not a right-wing hater of the homeless and addicted. This has now become personal for me. My 52-year-old brother, Dave, was found deceased under a bridge nine days ago in St. Louis, Missouri. It's a suspected heroin overdose, but it could be 15 weeks before I can get an autopsy report. I never condoned my brother's lifestyle. He'd been a criminal and substance abuser all of his adult life. They had to Google his name to find a relative, and my name was the only one associated with the phone number. We didn't throw him away. We chose not to enable him, but we fought for him with love for a son, a brother, a father, an uncle, and a friend. He chose the life he led. His family and friends tried desperately to help him. He chose to go to another state and live by his own rules, and he died alone. I see that same situation reflected in many of our addicted homeless population here in Olympia. My brother wasn't a piece of garbage. He was brilliant and witty, outgoing, and happy around most people. His family faced his demons as much as he did because he could be mentally, physically, and verbally abusive towards us. My fight is now for those like my brother who chose this lifestyle only to their eventual deaths and likely alone too. My brother's demons are gone now, but the family is left wondering how he became who he was in the end. How our country became a drug den of death? Why are humans being allowed to resort to a life of crime to support their addictions? I urge you not to stand by and ignore these problems only to say it's a housing issue alone. It's real. We need you to take action. Enabling people escaping to Olympia to descend further into a life of addiction, crime, and hopelessness is cruel to that person and to those of us who love them. How many more people have to die outside and alone because they're mentally ill, substance abusers, or both? We have to stop this thought that not sweeping the drug-filled camps is compassionate. The campers have a part in their lives too and need to make better choices. People are not garbage. So it's time the campers started acting in a manner that is consistent with improving their situation. When a city continues to allow crime and condone the drug use, they will keep coming. Olympia is proof of that. And all I ask for you to keep in mind is my brother's name and his face every time you go to make some type of new resolution initiative. David deserved better. Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah Joseph, followed by Renee Dars, followed by Danae Rosen.
In less than a month, the following has happened within or near unsanctioned encampments. Per the scanner, Christopher Snyder, also known as Mouse, has warrants, is armed, a threat to law enforcement, and lives in an encampment on Wheeler. There was police activity on Wheeler to search for Mouse for beating a camper named Caleb who resides in the jungle. These incidences are far too common at those two camps in particular. A large fire was started at the Wheeler Encampment by a person who had been camping there for two years. Two years. Since April of this year, there have been nearly 90 fires in unsanctioned encampments, which is an average of 15 a month. I don't want anyone to die in a fire. It's a horrible way to go. And finally, more tragic and mentally ill homeless man was murdered on Deschutes Parkway, and his murderer is still at large. Governing with compassion is necessary, and you all have that down. Compassion without honesty and critical thinking can become just as pathological as cancer. We need leaders and policies that balance the rights of the homeless while carrying out the important duty to maintain health and safety of all of us. Olympia has challenges being on the I-5 corridor between two major cities, and it's further complicated by the Martin versus Boise decision. But we are not alone in these challenges. Other cities along the I-5 corridor have been more effective in their response. Can we say the same? In some areas, we certainly can. But we need more pragmatic and effective approach in other areas. If this council intends to tacitly condone these ever-growing unsanctioned camps that have proven time and again that they cannot effectively govern themselves and have proven dangerous to themselves and the community, there needs to be better monitoring and accountability, and to do anything less is negligence. I and others who have come before you to speak have been accused of hating the homeless. I hate no one. I hate public speaking, and almost as much as I hate politics, yet I am here for a fourth time as a citizen who loves Olympia. There should not be no-go zones anywhere in Olympia, and campers with warrants need to be returned to that jurisdiction rather than hiding out in Olympia and further stretching our thin resources. I am at a loss as to why some of the homeless advocates and church groups not only condone this dangerous condition, but encourage it. Again, I ask this council, why aren't social workers embedded with the police and fire department regularly visiting these unsanctioned encampments? What are the barriers to this, and what are your objections, if any? Thank you, Mayor Selby. Thank you, each one of the council members, and to the city manager in advance to the response to this question.
Thank you. Renee Dars, followed by Danae Rosen, followed by Linda Ann Moniz.
Good evening. My name is Renee Dars, and I love Olympia. I want to discuss the October 28th meeting. After we were done speaking, you addressed us. You expressed your support in what we had to say. You also asked that we step it up, seek other councils, and even at county level, and discussed that since we are dealing with so many of their citizens, and our resources are limited, and all the shelter beds are located within the City of Olympia, that we need some resources from them. I have thought about this. Although I appreciate it is what you were saying, I feel like at the end of the day, you were passing the buck. My responsibility as a resident of the City of Olympia is to address my council. It is well within your power to go to these other cities and to speak for all of us. You have the limited stats and the knowledge of how much money there is, who has it, and what it's being used for. All I know is, as a common citizen, finding accurate information on this mess is near impossible, and I see absolutely nothing for the money that has been thrown at this so far. All of us that speak do so because of personal experiences, whether we were at one time a substance abuse abuser, or have a loved one that was, or is, or both. We also have had our own experiences with the ongoing mess, from abusive behaviors directed at us to things we have witnessed. I have handed you, or will be handing you, all a copy of correspondence that I have received from a gal I recently encountered. Please read what she said and reflect upon it. We seem to have two categories of people out on the streets. One, willfully homeless. Two, displaced homeless. My friend is in the latter category. How we view the homeless as a whole rests on your shoulders. You need to fix that. There has been far too much enabling, and it is costing some of them their very lives. This woman I encountered is in the forgotten group. She is not an active abuser. She has been clean for years. Her and her daughter now reside on the streets in a very unsafe area, and they are frightened. They are who we should be focusing on. The ones who actually want help, need help, and are willing to follow the rules. Why do they not matter? Why do we not matter? Why do the willfully homeless seem to be the only ones that do matter? Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Danae Rosen, followed by Linda Ann Moniz, followed by Izzy Lemay.
Are you guys sick of me yet? My name is Danae, and I love Olympia. I think it's time for a shift in thinking. We understand the need for compassion. However, it's inappropriate to allow lawlessness. There are pictures from all over our beautiful home of feces on sidewalks, people shooting up, people who are so high that they may be likely to harm themselves or others. As Sarah mentioned, there's been close to 100 structural or shelter fires as a result of the unsanctioned campers just this year, topped off with another violent murder. Allowing this behavior to continue is not compassionate. It's burying your heads in the sand, and it's to the detriment to all of us. Madam Mayor, I truly believe that you want order and accountability. I believe you too are a victim of majority rule on this council. It's my goal as both your neighbor and your constituent to see your situation change for the betterment of our community. It's now clear that we have two groups of at-risk people in our town, as Renee just mentioned. We have those who desperately want assistance and those who vehemently do not. I'm very disturbed when I hear stories about our disabled, our elderly, our families, and others that are teetering on the precipice of homelessness, being told that there's no funding for them. While the willfully homeless population continues not just to grow, but to thrive. They're encouraged by handouts of more tents, more blankets, more needles, porta-potties. I, I know that the city has the power to make necessary changes to zoning regulations, taxes, and fees that stand in the way of affordable housing. But perhaps the most troubling thing to me is the blatant dismissal of our First Nations people. I, I find it ironic that people can discuss decolonization when we're not even listening to the voices of the people that we all essentially borrow this land from. That's disgraceful. The Squaxon tribe has made their concerns over the bridge and Deschutes encampments very clear. Protecting and restoring the sensitive environments on both the inlet and the river is as much about the tribe's treaty-protected rights to those resources as it is about Olympia's community values. I say that when you willfully ignore the outcry of the Squaxon over the impact of litter, drug refuse, poaching, and human waste that's made by the willfully homeless, you're no better than the city officials who fought with them regarding their fishing rights 50 years ago. It's high time for real change within Olympia, and we know that it begins in this room. And as we have always said, we're here to support anybody who's ready to make a change for the positive and do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Linda Ann Moniz, followed by Izzy Lemay.
That's a lot to process, right? It's a lot to process. And I've had a lot to process. I hate when I get emotional here. God, I hate that. I just really love the city, and I'm still processing a lot from the last two weeks that we've all been kind of sharing in. But I do want to make mention that we do have a dangerous person, somebody who hurt a human being intentionally. Fire, gunfire, weapons. So that is my biggest concern, that we now have a murderer in our city. And who's next? And like Candy, I believe, mentioned, we're afraid of retribution, but we continue to come here because we have a voice. And we're not just about us, we're about everybody. The drug addicted, the mentally ill, the unhoused, the housed, all of us. We're all a community, and we all sharing this together. And the tribe? Yes. This was their land originally that we took from them, and we should have respect for them and their treaty rights, I think you want to call it. Like I said, I'm not an educated woman, but I know that I love Olympia, and I clearly see that there is a problem. Okay, you guys? Thank you.
Thank you. Izzy Lemay is our last speaker signed up for tonight.
As Talana mentioned, I'm continuing to read the police report. I interviewed the primary paramedic that initially treated Yvonne, Quinn Gagnon, from Medic 10. Gagnon, who provided me with a supplemental report, stated that BLS had arrived on scene at 07:33 hours and upgraded to ALS. The BLS personnel informed Gagnon that they had found Yvonne in the position and condition listed above, moved her from underneath the tree, and began to perform lifesaving interventions and access to the patient's airway. Gagnon stated that he immediately noticed that Yvonne was sick and had her loaded onto a stretcher and moved to the back of the medical vehicle in order to conduct a complete assessment and begin transport to St. Peter's Hospital. Gagnon noted that Yvonne had feces in her underwear and that there was a napkin-like paper product stuck to the fecal-stained underwear that was located around Yvonne's ankles. Gagnon stated that although Yvonne's clothes were undone, they did not appear torn or ripped. Yvonne's shirt was later cut off in order to conduct medical procedures, but no tears in the buttons appeared at the time Yvonne was located. During the assessment, Gagnon noted that Yvonne had a small laceration to her chin that is consistent with falling and bruising to the back of the head on the right side. Bruising was also noted on the back of the left shoulder. Yvonne's chest wall felt intact, but there were horizontal linear bruising across her upper abdomen and linear horizontal bruising across her mid-thighs. There are various other bruises and abrasions noted on Yvonne's arms, legs, and injury patterns potentially suggestive of track marks noted in the region of the right elbow. Due to the possibility that this is an overdose situation, Gagnon stated that Narcan was administered. Gagnon said that he took a rectal temperature of Yvonne and observed a one-inch hemorrhoid, but did not see any signs of sexual assault. Yvonne's body temperature was down to 84 degrees, and warming measures were started in order to increase her body temperature. Gagnon stated that Yvonne was brought to SPH, St. Peter Hospital, and he observed her belongings being placed in a bag and handed over to hospital staff. Yvonne's phone and purse were also provided to the medical staff. Yvonne's phone had been located near her body at the time she was located.
Thank you. That concludes this evening's public comment period. Any comments or questions, clarification, or staff from the dais? Councilwoman, Mayor Protem Bateman?
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for your public comment tonight. One individual did mention some of the comments that members of this council had made referencing advocacy at the county level, and I think you said that we were passing the buck. As someone who's worked as a legislative assistant and interacted with our county officials, if your objective is to obtain additional resources for housing or substance use disorder treatment, going to the county where they have a public health department, where they have additional resources, is just lending the advocacy to those county commissioners. It's an additional way for getting those additional resources. It's not us abdicating our responsibility to provide that leadership, which we do on multiple levels. It's similar to us continuing that work here while also having individuals such as yourself maybe working with organizations like NAMI, the National Alliance for Mental Illness, advocating for additional mental health resources at the state, so we can benefit from those. We do that, too. We put that on our legislative priorities list. But true change happens through advocacy when those elected officials see their own constituents, and what we have is a lack of constituents demonstrating these values at the county level. So it's in no way us abdicating. I can, I can kind of see how you might think that. I did offer to meet with you. No one's taken me up on that offer, so I'm definitely interested in having this conversation more. There's a lot of buckets that we're talking about: substance use disorder treatment, housing, law and justice. There's a lot of different areas, and those are really complex. So please do get ahold of me, and we can talk about it offline. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Councilmember Partially?
Thank you. What I hear in this room is the love of Olympia, whether it's pushing us to look at Yvonne McDonald, pushing us to look at our own homelessness response, housing response. That's something that we have in common, and we should be using that to find common ground to go forward. And I would echo what Mayor Protem Bateman said. I'll meet with any of you guys. This is a long trip. This isn't a short sprint. This is a marathon. All of this is a marathon. And I understand the frustration that not having an answer for Yvonne McDonald's death, I, I understand that. It leaves a lot of unresolved emotions that complicate the grief. I have always said that I am for a police auditor. I think most of us have said that, and the Finance Committee has talked about doing that. How do we finance that? So yes, I'm open to all this, and I am listening to you guys.
Thank you. Councilmember Rollins?
I just want to thank folks for coming out again. Clearly, it's a complex issue, homelessness, in a way, and drug addiction, in a way. It's complex. In another way, I think a lot of what I'm hearing are shared desires for solutions. I mean, if it's people that need housing, then the solution is housing. If it's, if it's drug addiction, then it's drug treatment. And I don't hear a lot of, I don't hear a lot of difference, like, argument. I think there's a shared frustration. I mean, I think we're some of the, to the degree there's difference, and I guess what I'm mindful of, I'll say, is I don't want to add, add harm and trauma to people that, like, that's at the root of their drug use. Because drug use has always, like, a why. What, why is it happening? It's not that people just all of a sudden decide that that's how they want to live their life. There's a why there. And I know that from my own experience. I know that from working at Capital Recovery Center for years. I know that the basis of, of any treatment program that's based in, in evidence and compassion is that we see people as people and not just their circumstances, not just their use, but as whole people. And so that's, that's what we're trying to do, I think. That's, that's, I think everybody's doing their best. I think the folks that are out there are doing their best. I know they are. And it's a, we're in a tough place, and it certainly didn't happen overnight. And it's going to take a while to get out of it, and we're only going to get out of it together. And I think on some level, we all see that. We just come at it from different ways, but that's what I have to try to keep remembering. There's a lot of things going with, there's, I mean, the, in the session I went to on, I did go to a session on medication-assisted treatment, there's, there's a lot of different tracks. And you can hit multiple, like, different topics happen at, you know, different times, so. And the Buick Clinic here down the street at Capital Recovery Center got a shout-out from the state, the healthcare authority that sees these programs all over the state. Like, there's so many things that are going well here, there's just not enough resources. That's what, and that's why we need the advocacy at the higher levels. Because honestly, I, I don't know, my take is just at the city level, we, there's a lot of focus going into just basic sanitation, and again, not enough. I'd like to see more of that, but that's a place where our, where our city has a mission. And I think there's, again, there's a lot going well. We need more of it, and I, I appreciate you coming out. To speak briefly to the folks who came for justice for Yvonne, I think what you're highlighting is that it would be really helpful to have an outside auditor or investigation to go over just even, like, the state of, like, the contradictions of where she was found or the state that she was in. It could be that, I mean, memory is not a reliable thing, and it could be that, but is some, is who's asking these questions besides you? So I think that would be worthwhile for, for trust-building and to try to, to get to some kind of resolution, because either way, it's not going to bring back your Aunt Talana, and I know you know that, and I know that you want justice, and you want to feel safe in your community and your family to feel safe. So I also have reached out to someone who works at Providence just to find out what their processes are, you know, for saving clothing and whatnot, and maybe there's a place that we can improve that for the, you know, future instances. Anyway, yeah, it's a lot to process tonight, especially, like, the format of public comment where it goes, like, back and forth, and this topic, and this topic, and this. So appreciate your patience while I kind of talk it out a bit, and thank you for coming.
All right, thank you. Anybody else?
I would just like to follow up with Mayor Protem Bateman's offer to meet with you. I, I've also been waiting until my schedule opened up a little bit, and I think a tour of our facilities that we have opened up, the mitigation site, the Plum Street Village, also meeting with the ambassadors and the familiar, understanding the Familiar Faces program and our crisis response outreach unit that is an embedded social worker with our, our police. As we've all been saying again and again, this is a very complex issue, and it's taken a generation to get us into this situation. It's going to take us probably a generation to get out of it. I have met with the governor's office again since, since last spring, where I met with them, with the governor and his director of, of housing and home services. And since then, he's now talking about having each county required to have, or cities requiring a housing plan. And I said, you need to have a sheltering plan required by cities. There's, it's very, very convenient for our neighboring cities to let us carry the load on this, and we all need to work with them, and so you don't want to throw anybody under the bus or make anybody feel inadequate, but they definitely have different constituents that show up and, and are very much pushing back against offering services in, in the city. And as we mentioned as well, that the Board of County, the Board of Public Health is the county, and we, they have revenue and, and programming that we can't, we're not a board of public health here, although we're acting like it in a lot of regards. But it's not what you want to hear. It's not going to be an easy answer, but I think a first step would be for you to understand the whole range of services that we do recently have funded and, and staffed. And again, it's just not to the scale. But some of the programs really are, are pretty amazing, and we're working as hard as we can. So thank you for that.
With that, closed public comment, and I will move to ask for a motion to approve tonight's consent calendar.
So moved. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oops, I skipped. I skipped ahead. There was an item four, thank you, Councilmember Cooper, our Chair of Finance. We had talked at agenda setting today about getting some clarification on item four H and four I. It's, it's a good news story, but there's a lot of big figures involved in it, and so I just want to make sure that our viewing public understands what we're doing as far as refinancing some of our, our debt obligation. And with that, I'd like to invite forward our Financial Services Director, Debbie Sullivan.
Thank you, Mayor. For the record, I'm Debbie Sullivan, Administrative Services-
Administrative Services, sorry.
Administrative Services Director, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak to two ordinances that are before you tonight seeking authorization to issue debt. And in the audience with me tonight is our Bond Counsel, Nancy Naris, with Foster Garvey, and Scott Bauer, our Financial Advisor with Northwest Municipal Advisors. And if you have really technical questions, they'll be happy to come up and answer those. But I just want to summarize what's before you tonight. We are seeking authorization to issue general obligation bonds in the amount of $52 million, and this is to refinance City Hall bonds that were issued in 2009, refinance voter-approved bonds from 2009 that were used to build the fourth fire station and the regional training center. And we'll also refinance a bond anticipation note which matures in 2020, finance the replacement of a ladder truck for fire, which has been on our work plan for over a year now, and finance $2 million for future park property acquisition and/or development. And I just want to say to you that this is a really good time to issue debt. Rates are historically low. So for example, the interest rate for the City Hall bonds average about 6.45%, and we believe we can refinance them for as low as 2.3%. Refinancing City Hall and the fire station debt will save the city and tax- Refinancing City Hall and the fire station debt will save the city and taxpayers over $6.1 million over the life of those loans. Financing the new ladder truck, like I said, has been on our work plan for a long time, and so these low interest rates, it just makes sense to do this at this time. You may be asking yourself, "What are we going to do with the savings from this?" Well, two things. One, the City Hall bonds, we are intending to use that money to pay off more debt. And then the refinancing of the fire station bonds, that will save approximately $1 million over 10 years, and they were voter-approved. So property owners will see a savings in their levy. The second thing that is in front of you tonight is authorization to issue debt in February when two water sewer revenue bonds become eligible. And so the total of that is $8.5 million, and we anticipate saving $816 million over 10 years, and this is beneficial to our ratepayers. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those or turn to our advisors.
Thank you, Debbie. So just so people understand, this is not an additional debt, this is just refinancing like you would for a house mortgage where you can get a better rate. So we're saving our taxpayers' dollars.
That's correct.
Very important. Any other? All right, thank you so much. Now, all in favor of approving tonight's consent calendar, say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. We have three public hearings this evening. First is a hearing on a petition for the Bethel Street right-of-way vacation, which is a land-use term. It's not like anybody gets to go anywhere. And I'd like to invite Fran Idy of Public Works Engineering, our city engineer.
Good evening. I'm Fran Idy, city engineer, and this evening I'm before you to present information related to proposed vacation on Bethel Street Northeast before we open it up for a public hearing. The site is located at the northwest corner of State Avenue and Bethel Street, and we'll zoom in for a little closer view here. It's the, this stretch right along here on Bethel. And the site here is a part of a proposed redevelopment. It was previously a single-family residential site, and the applicant has received land use approval to repurpose the site into mixed use with medical and residential. So, a little bit more about the prep for this evening's meeting, that part of the preparation for the public hearing, of course, includes notification of nearby property owners. And the code requires that we reach out 300 feet beyond the limits of the project. As you can see by the map, that if we had gone by the 300 feet, as noted by the circles, we would have cut off a number of the neighborhoods that were immediately adjacent or from one neighbor to the next. So we took a look at that and advanced those limits, and so the blue line on the outside there signifies the revised notice limits. In addition to that, in addition to the mailings and notices in the newspaper, we also posted the site, including a notice of the public hearing and a map that depicted some information about the proposed vacation. The proposed area to be vacated is five feet wide. I received a few calls, and people said, "Why are you going to close Bethel Street?" Well, we're not going to close Bethel Street. We're looking at about, at a five-foot-wide stretch of right-of-way, as noted here, in the red line depicted here, adjacent to this property, that would allow a development of a near-retaining wall associated with the site development. Let me go back for just a sec. This might be helpful. As you'll note here, with the previous residence, and then there was a driveway off of Bethel Street here, and that's how the previous residence gained access to parking off-site. You'll notice that that's close to the intersection of Bethel and State, as well as being basically halfway between there and the alley, so potential for some conflict there. The land use approval looks to switch that around a little bit and require that there will be new sidewalk along Bethel Street, so that will improve the pedestrian access along here, was previously gravel. Also provides for some new asphalt, so a little bit more on-street parking, and then would require this improvement off of the alley to provide access to off-street parking for the development as well. So those will be the elements of the new project that, as I mentioned, received land use approval in earlier this year. Now, to the vacation itself, a little bit more about the process. Per the municipal code, no petition to vacate the street or alley or portion thereof shall be approved unless the following criteria can be met, that the proposed vacation will not materially, will not be materially detrimental to other properties in the vicinity, nor will it endanger public health, safety, and welfare. The fact that the proposal is to vacate a five-foot-wide strip adjacent to a single piece of property ensures that that criteria is met. That, second, is that the subject right-of-way is not needed for general access, emergency services, utility facilities, or other similar public purposes, nor is it necessary as a part of a long-range circulation plan, pedestrian bicycle pathway plan, or street improvement plan. Providing easement, relocating facilities, or implement in other similar alternatives equal to or superior to the existing or planned facilities may cause the petition to comply with this criteria. And in this situation, the applicant is requesting, again, the five-foot of right-of-way to be vacated, as opposed to the general, excuse me, the entire width, so general access, emergency services, utility facilities, and other similar public purposes can be accommodated and will, as a result of this project, be improved via the additional paving and sidewalk. Next, the subject vacation is consistent with the adopted comprehensive plan and other related land use and circulation regulations and policies, including but not limited to the Olympia Development Standards related to subdivisions and zoning found in the code. And as noted earlier, the proposal has received land use approval and as such has been vetted against all applicable codes. And that the subject, finally, the subject vacation would not directly or indirectly result in an inverse impact on historical or cultural resources, the natural environment or other negatively, or otherwise negatively affect an environmentally sensitive area as defined in the code. And as, again, going back to the rigorous process of land use review and approval, the project has gone through already and been vetted, the proposed development will not be detrimental to any of those two cultural resources nor the environment. So this concludes the, my presentation, so I'd be happy to answer any additional questions prior to opening it for a public hearing.
Thanks, Fran. Anybody? Councilmember Cooper?
Thank you, Mayor Selby. Just a few questions, and mine are related to the project, even though that's not the decision in front of us, because I think it's backwards to give away the city land before we know the final project, but that's just me. So is the alleyway to the north gravel or paved?
You know, I'm not sure.
So my question is, if you add a sidewalk there, what will the treatment at the alley look like? And should it not be the landowner's responsibility to do the sidewalk at least across half of the alley if it's not already improved?
I can follow up with that, having to do with onsite improvements and offsite improvements, so we can look at that, and first being, is it gravel or paved?
Okay. And then, related to that, the stormwater from this new sidewalk and new asphalt will go into our new system on State Avenue. Is the capacity adequate, or is there going to be a stormwater treatment that'll stop it from going onto State?
All of the engineering permits will be reviewed and approved as a part of that, so those things will be, are yet to be permitted, and yes, will be required per that permitting process to meet those criteria.
Okay. And then I just also have a concern about the next property to the north. If we're jogging the sidewalk that much to the west, how will the alignment happen if that next property on the other side of the street is developed or redeveloped?
Yeah, per the map you can see here is a little bit of an offset already existing between these two properties, but as those sites redevelop, we can certainly look at ways to accommodate that, given that they're sufficient right-of-way for us to work within, so.
Well, and that's really, my question is, is there enough room on that property to have this sidewalk alignment continue, or is it going to jog back east?
Let's go back, yeah. Real quick here, sorry. Unfortunately, don't show.
Oh, that the next property is the corner.
Going, sorry, north, if you're asking.
Yeah, so right.
Going this way.
Yeah, so if we need to get that sidewalk to go around that corner, I just want to make sure that this vacation isn't going to move it too far west to make that alignment work. Because the sidewalk will eventually go to the end of Bethel and then go around Olympic Drive.
Right here. You're talking about this stretch through here. Right. And, well, it would take quite a redevelopment, and we can, you'll also note the driveway that's coming out here of this residential site here. So when that occurs, we would work within the, there is plenty of right-of-way to require that that happen. So the kind of chicken and egg with development versus vacation is also part of the code that a vacation comes forward with an approvable site plan. So that's why the development is as far down the path as it is, as opposed to the vacation. We wouldn't want to vacate and then find that the development is not viable, and then we have these vacations that there's no, we've given up that right-of-way for no need.
Yeah, no, and that makes sense. Hearing that there's enough right-of-way is enough for my concern at the moment. I just want to remind us, when we jump too fast into vacations, we end up with buildings on Capitol Way that have no interaction with people for a whole city block on the Capitol Campus. And so I think we need to make sure that we ask more questions when we do a vacation about the final design and plan.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Councilmember Jones?
So thanks for that set of questions. Just one more piece, and that is, so what is the impact on the travel lanes on Bethel Street? Do they remain as they are today, or is there a change in the width of the travel lanes?
They'll basically remain as is, and you'll note that the, with the bulb out here, that's narrowed up the access point there at the intersection, what you'll see is an extension of this curb line back here, and there'll be a little more parking for off-street parking to accommodate that in addition to the existing travel lanes.
And we saw the cross-section, does that mean that this developer is rebuilding that section of roadway to accommodate that parking strip?
Mm-hmm. Yes, yes. The parking strip and the sidewalk area.
Great. Thank you.
So it is paid by the development?
Yeah. Yeah, these are all frontage improvements required of the land use permit. So these are frontage improvements and developments that the owner, the new owner of the site will be installing.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then the bulb out, looks like, obviously you'll make the sidewalk match up with the bulb out sidewalk.
Right.
Where it cuts out, okay.
Yep, all of that will happen during the engineering review and approval.
All right. So I think we'll go ahead and I'll open the public hearing. So this time, I'd like to open a public hearing on the petition to vacate a portion of Bethel Street Northeast between State Avenue and Olympic Drive. And I did not, I'm so sorry. I do have two people signed up, same rules as public comment, a three-minute countdown clock over my right shoulder, and I've got Randy Foster and Lisa Ilahi.
Can I use the mask? Oh, sure. Hi, good evening. My name is Lisa Ilahi. Thank you. Oops. And I live at 222 Bethel Street, this is not showing up, which is Kitty Corner from where that is. So where that sidewalk ends right there, if you go Kitty Corner, that's where I live. I can answer you the question that the alley is paved. She's right, when you go right across that street to that property, you can't align a sidewalk, because it goes right into a driveway. And trying to put a sidewalk to keep that alignment, there's a huge tree you'd probably have to take out there, I think that requires a little bit more analysis. I was here on September 10th to talk about my concern about this. And where that yellow strip is right now, my understanding is that's for about four parking spots, and the driveway, which would be accessed through the alley, is for, I think, two more parking spots. So as you can see, so my concern is the alley, the pedestrian traffic on the alley. My first concern that I want to say and ask for you to do in the future, you're putting public signs on the corner of Bethel and State, and that's fine, but my concern and the people that aren't here to talk about it, that don't see the public notice, use that alleyway. So future public notices need to go on that alleyway of Bethel Street and Olympic Avenue, if you could make that note. But this is the deal, when you come down State and you have to turn on Bethel and you're going to go to this business, now I'm not sure who's going to get the parking spots in the driveway, if it's the residents on top that they're going to build the residential housing, then that's great, they know that they can pull in there. But people for the business are going to have to turn around to park correctly facing south, right? So my concern is you pull in, "Oh, I see, I have to park this way, so I'm either going to have to go to the alley and turn in and back out, I'll either use that other properties' driveway to go in and back out, I'll use Olympic driveway, or we'll use my driveway." So my concern is to just keep that in mind when you're thinking about traffic flow. So the signs, no sidewalk, and my neighbor didn't receive, outside of 300 feet, he didn't receive a notice. So I'm not sure how you're sending those notifications out, but I checked with him, he didn't receive anything. So please just keep that in mind, this traffic flow, because on that alleyway, pedestrians, bicyclists, cyclists, cars, that road is not wide enough for two cars to go down or to pass going the other way. So please keep that in mind when you're thinking about improvements and all that stuff. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there Randy Foster?
Hi, I'm Randy Foster. I'm with the Architectural Services Team that has been doing the design work for this project. I originally wanted to just present myself and open myself up to questions that you might have. Some of the comments that were made tonight, I did want to address, if I may. It does appear, and it's a natural thing to imagine, looking at the site plan, that the yellow mark there is actually going to be the sidewalk. In actual practice, some of the imagery that we saw earlier, you could see the existing home is kind of up on a bit of a higher ground than the street, and just the physical act of taking advantage of the entire public right-of-way that exists currently would mean removing earth up to the lot line. So that's what the city actually has in its possession right now. And to carry the grade of the street to the actual edge of the public right-of-way, you'll be somewhere between seven and zero feet downhill from a private piece of property that is actually up above. You know, the average is about four feet, but in general, there has to be a retaining wall for the city to take full advantage of the existing public right-of-way. And the petition for the vacation is the result of just trying to find a way to build that retaining wall. The original proposal that I offered to the city verbally was, you know, "Our client will pay for the improvements, we'd just like to put it in the public right-of-way. There's no physical space to put the retaining wall on the private property because of the existing structure that's there." And the city's response was, "Well, you know, we really, we can't have you guys building a retaining wall in the public right-of-way, but potentially through the vacation process, we could create space where that retaining wall could go on private property." And so what we're really suggesting is, within this yellow block, that we create a scenario where the private citizen can create a retaining wall that actually enables improvement in utilization of the land that is currently in the public right-of-way, and more specifically, the homeowners are actually going to fund that improvement. So, you know, this whole thing is not about trying to give something to a private citizen, it's allowing the private citizen to invest, and it's just physically necessary. it's allowing the private citizen to invest, and it's just physically necessary for that investment to occur.
It's, I don't think we do question and answer with public hearing participants, so.
That's fine. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. There, um, I can open, keep this open, is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak regarding the vacation for the Bethel Street block? Is there anyone else? Go ahead and close the public hearing, and anyone else have clarifying questions for Fran? Councilmember Gilman.
Thank you. So I'm, I'm, I'm looking at this picture, and I'm, I'm imagining myself standing there at the Olympian Building and looking across at the, the height of that retaining wall. So I'm thinking the parking right on State, maybe this new sidewalk would facilitate people walking around the block to access the building, and maybe the sidewalk serves a function for people who would park on Bethel, on those, you know, along the curb there. It's, it's kind of, it's a frustrating little piece of infrastructure to put in a block of sidewalk that clearly has no future of continuing, that on the, the east side of the road, you could potentially wrap the sidewalk around to Olympic, but there's, there's no opportunity to continue it. So we're, unless it serves a useful function for moving the tenants and clients of this new structure, then it's, it's, it's kind of, it's, it's not gonna serve a broader transportation network kind of function. So I'm just, I'm just thinking out loud, and I'm, I'm wondering, is, is that the intention? Is that that sidewalk is to serve people who are parking either on State or on Bethel and are going to access the new building?
Yeah, that's part of it, and you can see from this picture here, just what the situation was. I think the, um, the earlier speakers talked about the amount of pedestrian traffic on the alleyway as well. So there is need, I'm understanding, um, in regards to that connection of that loop, and as you can note here, just that it goes from concrete, just an asphalt ribbon path down to existing elevation, and then there's, in the current state, a lot of just overgrown vegetation. The new proposal would, um, as noted, create this new retaining wall, it would wrap around the corner here, where we've got that elevation, significant elevation difference, and then the new sidewalk would be up across there, a six-foot-wide sidewalk would go across that frontage down to the point where it matches in elevation-wise near the alley. So provide that connection to people using the alley through here as well. It is a unique little neighborhood in the streets and the access and, and, but as far as the, the transportation network, that's, that's where we're seeing that need as well, not to say that we can't go back and have the conversation, but to move it to the other side, but that, that would be a whole nother.
So Fran, the pedestrian access would be from the alley? Is that where people would enter to, to use the, the professional offices or whatever in there?
Yeah, maybe, I, I'm not familiar with, with all the pedestrian access through, to and through the site. I think there may be somebody else in the audience that might be able to better answer that question. But this does certainly lend itself to, if we go back to another.
There's currently stairs from State up to the building now.
Right, but here, there's also, um, along the alleyway here, that there's a connection, so rather than staying on State Avenue, being able to cut through and across, and then Olympic Drive connects, goes through, you can notice that it doesn't stay within its right of way, but rather goes straight on through. So I'm not terribly familiar with the pedestrian and bicycle.
I'm just trying to think of the utility of that, that sidewalk, and then my, my one other question's about the parking strip along there. We've, we've narrowed the street with the bulb outs, it's already, as, as one of the neighbors was saying, it's, it's something that two cars can't pass. So is, is there a, how do you evaluate the impact of having a few cars park along that new asphalt strip? Is that a traffic impact analysis? Is that, or, you know, how do you make the case that that's not going to further narrow the road?
Can we, can we clarify? I think she was talking about the alley, alley doesn't have room for two cars to pass, but Bethel does. Barely.
Barely, yeah, it's, it's, it's snug. So I, I guess I just, is, is, is that part of the groundwork also? Is that, that that parking won't have a negative impact on cars?
Ultimately, that would be the intent, is that parking would not have a negative impact, yes. There was not a, you mentioned the TIA, and there was not a specific transportation impact analysis done on the project, just of the size and nature.
I understand.
Volume, didn't require that.
But those questions.
Right.
Because it's, I mean, these are skinny streets for blocks and blocks with dirt shoulders, right? That's, that's the neighborhood here.
Right. And this, the new asphalt looks like it's about nine and a half feet wide, which is a little bit wider, so that, that's, now that's from this point, existing edge of pavement over to the new face of curb, where you'll see a slight little offset here, so you're actually, from this eight and a half foot length, existing eight and a half foot lane, you're gonna actually gain a little bit, say a foot and a half, so that gives you a little bit more travel, of paved travel way to stay on, um, to make your way towards that curb and to the intersection, so if that makes sense. There is some intended improvement by extending the existing asphalt out a little bit.
Great. Thank you for helping me understand. I know this is shoehorning, you know, the, the project in. Thank you.
Right, Councilmember Jones.
So earlier, when there was a land use action on this parcel, there was a yellow sign that was located on Bethel and the alleyway. How do we determine where these signs are located on the parcel?
A lot of it has to do with access, where would be the most, the, they have the most eyes on it, if you will. And these are, I'd say, in addition to the mailings that are intended to reach all of the adjacent property owners, so it would be in addition to that. So it, there's not anything in code that says one or two or three or five and placement on-site, but rather the idea being to place it where it's gonna have the most, be seen, be able to be seen the most, where's the most, most traffic going by in order to do that, so.
Thank you.
Right. Councilmember Partially.
Just to clarify, just so I make sure I understand, the new asphalt actually is creating new space, more distance for cars to park than what already exists. Is that correct? Just so I understand.
Yeah, this plan's showing about eight and a half feet, if you were to have that centered, yes.
And the new sidewalk would actually make it safer for people coming up either on bike or walking from the alley to go down on a safe sidewalk down onto State.
Yeah, substantially improves that pedestrian access.
And if this is permitted to become like a mixed use, where there's maybe a professional office with housing above, they would have to probably adhere, well, they would, to ADA requirements, for somebody to have a parking spot up in the, or for clients that, that couldn't come up, you know, from one of the parking spots. All that would be in place. So, we've got options, oh, sorry, Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor Selby. I move to approve the petition to vacate and direct staff to prefer a vacation ordinance and require payment to the city of one-half of the appraised value.
Second.
Further discussion? All right, Councilmember Gilman.
I just want to say that I, I'm supporting this, I know we had a lot of questions, but I also have confidence in the, the design review process, that there's, all those requirements are going to be considered as the design evolves. So, so I, I support this.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No nays, so motion passes. Thanks, Fran.
You're welcome, thank you.
We are on to item 5B, which is a public hearing to consider an ordinance declaring a continuing state of a public health emergency related to homelessness. This will be a first and final reading. So I'm happy to invite Director of Community Planning and Development and now interim Assistant City Manager Keith Staley, lots of hats.
Yes, ma'am. It was CPD and Director when the staff report was written.
Yes.
So we'll go with that. Good evening, my name's Keith Staley, Community Planning and Development Director, also interim City Assistant City Manager, and here to provide you with a brief staff report regarding the conducting a public hearing to move and moving to approve the ordinance declaring a continuing state of public health emergency related to human health and environmental conditions caused by increasing homelessness in our community on first and final reading this evening. The, the thought from the city manager's office and from staff's perspective is that our emergency situation continues to exist and that we have a need to continue this state of public health emergency. It is our recommendation that we extend this for an additional six months, and that we'll return at that point in time and evaluate whether or not the emergency continues to exist. As you know, there are ongoing threats to public health and safety that are, are myriad and evident in our downtown and throughout our community. I'd be happy to answer any specific questions about this action, but again, we encourage you to move this forward, hold the public hearing, and approve the ordinance as presented. Thank you.
All right, any questions for Keith? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I will now open a public hearing to consider an ordinance declaring a continuing state of public health emergency related to homelessness. I have two people signed up this evening, but I'll also open it up to anyone else that didn't get a chance to sign it before we pulled the sheets. We have a same format as our public comment in our previous public hearing, I have three-minute countdown clock over my right shoulder. At this time, I'd like to invite Robin Lester, followed by Christine Cole. Robin Lester? Christine Cole. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak during the public hearing? Is there anyone else? All right, I will now close the public hearing. Is there any additional questions since 30 seconds ago? All right. So Mayor Portem Bateman, I believe you have the motion.
I do, and I'll just say, I think Keith already mentioned it, but there is a sunset on this of 2021, so we do have some action to get underway quickly. But I do move to approve an ordinance declaring a continuing state of public health emergency related to homelessness on first and final reading.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Takes us on to item 5C, which is a public hearing on an ordinance setting the 2020 ad valorem tax, and I'm happy to invite Nancy Lean, our Fiscal Services Director, to talk to us about this, this strange Latin term that comes up, you know, once a year.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Selby, and councilmembers, city staff, and the public. This evening, you have before you, we're gonna be having a public hearing for setting the ordinance that will levy taxes for, we levy them in 2019, but be, to be collectible in 2020. I'd like to, okay. I just wanted to first, I always like to start with a little bit of terminology, I think we did this last year, but remember, as Mayor Selby mentioned, that ad valorem is just a fancy word for property taxes. It's Latin, and it means based on the valuation of an item or transaction. Assessed value, there's three, three parts to the property taxes that I like to remind people about. There's the assessed value, which is the dollar amount that the county assessor assigns to property within the, the taxable properties within the Olympia city limits. The property tax levy, which the council will be setting tonight, that's one of your superpowers that you have, is to pay for services, and in property taxes, pay for general services. So it's an important part of our revenue stream. And the last one is the property tax rate, and no one actually sets that, it's just a calculation that happens when you take the levy that you set this evening, and you divide it by the assessed value that the county assessor determines for the values of the properties, and that's how they determine the actual rate. So even though we estimate it throughout this process, it's really a calculation that happens at the very last step. The other part of the requirement of, in addition to having the public hearing, is that I have to share with you the other revenue sources that we use in our general fund to support the services that we provide. So this table actually lists all of the general fund sources by type. You can see that the, the three that I'd like to point out are the property taxes, the sales tax, and the charges for services. Those are your big three revenue sources, and with the sales tax being your number one source at about 27%, the charges for services being your second at about 20%, and then property taxes are your third largest source. And charges for services because, uh, that's what I'm trying to thought of that. So, so those are your, your, the big three, you have, also have other sources of business taxes, your utility taxes, both private and municipal, and a couple other smaller taxes, licenses and permits, rents and leases, and then just some miscellaneous revenue. This next slide actually is that same, wow, we lost some of our little names there. They were black when we left them. This next slide shows the pie chart of that same information, and the large red one should represent charges for services, sorry, that's not showing up. The green one is your property tax, and then sales tax, your number one. And those three sources together are about 65% of your revenue. So we could do like a guessing game what the other ones are, but I think you could see your big sources. Sorry about that. The assumptions that we made when we prepared the proposed property tax levy was that we would take, with the state statute allows us, which is to take 1% of our highest allowable, which is usually last year's rate multiplied by 101%, and that will generate about $185,000. We also are allowed to take taxes associated with new construction, and this year in Olympia, new construction value is 107 million, and that generates about 170, excuse me, 272,000, or about 273,000. And then we're also able to assess what's called a refund levy, levy, kind of sounds contradictory to collecting money, but, but what that's about is that throughout the year after we set the levy, taxpayers have the opportunity to go to the county assessor, and they can contest whatever their taxes were that they were levied, and the county assessor can agree with them and say, maybe we've taxed you too high, or maybe your property shouldn't have been taxed at all. And if in fact they do do that, or basically take away whatever a portion of the levy that we had assessed, we're allowed the following year to reassess that portion so that we can collect what we initially had requested to collect. And that's, for this year, that's $74,000. So put all the pieces together, and we have two parts to our property tax levy. One is the, the general expense levy, which pays, again, for services that we provide of general nature. And the second half in the lower portion of this table is for the voted property tax levy for the fire station that Director Sullivan had mentioned earlier. So if you take a look at the upper portion of the table, we start off with, which is basically our highest allowable general expense levy, about $18,500,000. And to that, we get to add that 1% increase, so 185,000, that subtotals out to about 18,000, 18,700,000, and then the new construction of 272,000, and then the refund levy for a total for our general expense levy of about $19 million. The lower portion of the table outlines what the property tax levy is for the voted levy that we had for the fire station originally issued in 2009. And we only levy there what we need for our debt service the following year. So that's, the taxpayers are the ones that get the direct benefit for the refinancing that we're gonna be doing between now and the end of the year. So currently, we will be levying about 1.1... doing between now and the end of the year. So currently, we will be levying about $1.19 or about $1.2 million to pay for those bonds, and there's also an administrative levy from last year of about $6,200. So all total, that portion of these two components is about $1.2 million. And all totaled together, $20 million, $20.2 million between the general levy and the voted levy. So the final determination will be made by the county assessor, because they do that calculation between what you levy this evening and then the assessed value that they come up with. We do, we are, have one more evaluation pending. So between now and the second reading next week, we'll update the numbers, so you'll get the final numbers. And that valuation could go up or down depending upon which pieces are left for them to include. So for 2020, we're estimating our rate to be about $2.44. That's about a penny less than what you levied last year. So this is an example of, you've increased your levy, but because you've had new construction, you're able to kind of spread the amount that you're going to collect over a greater taxpayer base, and so that the rate actually is reduced.
Questions? Questions? Lot of information. Yeah, Councilmember Gilman.
Ms. Lean, I'm just really curious about the charges for services. Can we call a lifeline? You said you weren't, it wasn't coming to mind as you went through the primary...
Oh, why I called that out?
Yeah. So what are charges for services that go to general fund? I'm assuming that's separate from our utility funds.
Correct. That's correct. Let me get back to that slide so we can see the... Sorry. Charges for services, so people paying for parking recreation classes, people paying for, at the fire department, we charge for, we do repairs on city vehicle, on other fire agencies' vehicles. I'm trying to think of every piece that's in there right now. I could get you all the detail behind it.
That's fine. But those, there were sorts of chargebacks or performing services for other government agencies.
Other government agencies or the public.
It just seems like the fees that we charge for parking permits and parks programs, I'd be surprised that they'd be a larger chunk of the pie than property tax revenue. That's why I was trying to figure out what were the other millions and millions kinds of part of that.
Oh, I can get you the details on that piece.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Councilmember Jones.
Just to follow on, so a charge for a permitting fee would not end up in the general fund. It would be assigned to a portion, to another portion?
Actually, this time, for some reason, the black things showed up. So licenses and permits, so these are the categories that the Washington State Auditor requires that we segregate our revenue into. Taxes, we happen to have separated those out, so you can see those. But we've got the sales tax, property tax, other revenue can be things like interest on investments. Rents and leases have a section, fines and penalties, things that happen between the courts, and then there's the charges for services again. Intergovernmental are things that we, not necessarily charges for services, but things that we receive the state shared revenue would come under that for the marijuana or your liquor profit tax. And there is a section down there that's kind of crowding up with gambling tax that slices as a permit, so those are separate from those charges for services.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor Selby. I'll just point the council to page three in the budget, which outlines the full charges, service charges, revenue, and includes, and this one includes the utilities, so it's bigger than what we're seeing right now, but that's all there on page three.
That's correct. This is just the general fund, but thank you.
It's all available online, too, right? The preliminary budget is available online?
The budget's online, and I appreciate Councilmember Cooper advertising that.
Awesome. Councilmember Jones.
Well, I actually, you're going to go to a public hearing now?
Yes.
Okay.
So we're done with the questions for now. All right.
Okay.
So I'm going to go ahead and open a public hearing on the ordinance setting the 2020 ad valorem tax. We didn't have anybody sign up, but after that compelling and riveting, I know, come on, it's like Budget 101. Not anybody. Phone in. No, I'm just kidding. So is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for three minutes about our ad valorem tax? Is there anybody in the audience? Excuse me. All right, I'll go ahead and close the hearing. Great job. And if there's no other questions, I would entertain a motion. Yes, Councilmember Jones.
I would move to approve the ordinance setting the 2020 ad valorem tax on first reading and forward to second reading.
Second. And I have a discussion item just wait.
All right, before the vote. All right, Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor Selby. I just wanted to say for the record that the current Consumer Price Index for this year is about 2.5%. And so I want, it's really important, and I'll make comments in the closing of the meeting, that we really need to push hard on our legislature to allow us to adjust for the actual change in the cost of goods within our city budget. This recipe is an ongoing recipe for a declining budget, and continuing to have to make cuts to services is not what our citizens expect. And in fact, I know that because I didn't vote for the initiative that we're working under that was actually thrown out by the Supreme Court, and then the legislature went ahead and implemented. So if any legislators are listening, we'd like you to make some changes, because this is really unsustainable. Thank you.
Structurally unsustainable to only be able to grow by 1% when your costs raise, rise close to 3%. Thank you for that. And with that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Thank you. And that takes us to other business. We have one item this evening, and that's discussion of budget special topics, utility rates, impact fees, development fees, parking business improvement area taxes, and a lodging tax. So we have quite a lineup, and I am going to first invite Debbie Sullivan, our Administrative Services Director, to be the emcee for the evening.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. As part of the annual budget process, we review and update our various fees and rates to ensure that they are set appropriately to support our expenditures. And so tonight, we do have quite a lineup. You'll hear presentations from subject matter experts on utility rates, general facility charges, parks, transportation, and school district impact fees, 2020 development fee adjustments. Once that is done, we will pivot to the parking and benefit improvement area budget and lodging tax recommendations. There are many presentations here. They are brief. I encourage you to ask questions after each presenter, because you may forget your question by the time you get to the end of it. So they're all prepared for that. And so to kick us off tonight, it's going to be Eric Christensen, who'll talk about the 2020 proposed utility rates.
I had a quick question from Mayor Protem Bateman about maybe shifting the order. I don't want to throw everybody off, but since Jennifer Pretty from the school district has been sitting here all evening as well, and I just didn't know if we could move her up.
Absolutely.
Would that be okay?
Oh, absolutely.
Would you like to do, no? You don't want to move up? You got it in your head where you're going. Okay. Don't want to mess with you. All right. So I just, I'll offer. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Eric Christensen. I'm the Water Resources Director. I'll present the utility rates and general facility charges. The proposed utility rates, the rates that we are proposing are for storm and surface water, an increase of 3.6%, drinking water, an increase of 6.3%, wastewater, a 2/10 of a percent increase, waste resources, 3.3%, and LOT has established their rate increase for this year in a biannual budget in 2018 of 3%. The total combined increase will be 3.4%. Key drivers for these rate increases are an assumed 1% increase in the municipal utility tax, to roughly a 2% COLA increase, and a 1% growth in accounts. That's taken into account for all of the utilities. Waste resources, as Gary Franks presented to you in September, they continue to have a struggling recycling market. Last year, they also bought down a rate increase with cash, so that revenue wasn't realized going into 2020. Similar in drinking water, we did not have a rate increase. We bought roughly $565,000 down with cash that was available last year. And we are proposing to increase our depreciation funding, capital depreciation funding this year by $100,000. We still are about half a million dollars short from what our consultant has recommended we fund in capital depreciation funding. In wastewater and stormwater, key changes are, we're proposing to move some staff. They share construction crews. They have roughly equivalent workloads in each of the utilities, but the storm and surface water has been carrying roughly 1.5 FTEs more, so we're proposing to balance that. In addition, we found that our actual revenues have been coming in roughly $300,000 over our projected revenues for the last few years. This year's revenues duplicate that, so we're comfortable increasing our revenue to the actual rate rather than inflating what's been projected in the past. That's why the rate increase in wastewater is significantly less. Storm and surface water, primary drivers there, even though we're moving some staff to wastewater, are, we're also adding a half FTE to support a grant-funded sweeper we hope to receive this next year, and a new vehicle, which will be a very modest amount. Most of the costs driving storm and surface water this year are in-house costs, inter-fund transfers. So the implications for our rate pairs are, for an average rate pair in terms of retail, I mean, in residential, is an overall increase of 3.4% roughly. That works out to be $8.78 on a bi-monthly bill, or about $105 a year. As for general facility charges, the only general facility charge that we're proposing to increase for the city is the storm and surface water general facility charge. We're proposing to increase that 10%. We could more than double our storm and surface water base rate and quadruple what we call our vehicle trip general facility charge. We're proposing to just moderately increase it until we reach that level. Looks like it's somewhat cut off here, but the total cost for a new residence next year should, a typical new residence will be $15,612. That's an increase of $319. LOT Clean Water Alliance has also passed a 3% increase in their capacity development charge, very similar to a general facility charge. That was passed in 2018, again, with their biannual budget. We presented these materials along with the Capital Facility Plan, the 2020-2025 Capital Facility Plan, to the Utility Advisory Committee over the last few months. They were presented to the Utility Advisory Committee without, with a zero, with no increase in the municipal utility tax, however. We met with them last week, and the chair attended the Finance Committee, so he was aware that you were proposing a 1% municipal utility tax, and we did discuss that. They understand, the Utility Advisory Committee understands that they don't play a role in that municipal utility tax, but they also express that they do not support it at this time. They submitted a letter last year, and for the same reasons as last year, they aren't supporting it. They do support the information that we brought to them through the last few months, along with the Capital Facilities Plan. That's all I have. If you've got any questions.
Any questions for Eric? Councilmember Gilman?
Eric, I'm not familiar with the trip charge per part of the storm and surface. What is that, $6? Is that per something?
It's per vehicle trip generated by new development. So for a residence, I believe it's 9.78 vehicle trips per day, and you multiply that by the $6.60. Now, a drive-through would have far more vehicle trips and would pay a much higher cost associated with that component of the general facility charge.
But that's a one-time portion of the general facilities charges of a...
Up front.
As you're permitting and building a new project, so it'd be like $54. It's not charged every day that you make nine trips.
No, it's charged when you obtain your permit for new construction or redevelopment. Sometimes there's no cost associated with redevelopment if the land use decreases the number of vehicle trips.
Thank you.
I had another, did you have something? Councilmember Jones.
So Eric, I don't know if my question is for you or for others, but would you explain our existing lifeline utility rate?
So we currently have a lifeline, essentially, you can receive 50% discount on your utility rates, city utility rates, if you are 62 years and older and meet the minimum income requirements. Last year, we looked at options for expanding that, and I know I've got an email in my box to respond to you on this. We looked at options to do that. What we did was better market the current plan, and I believe we increased the number of people there. I think it's 170 more people. I think the key thing is, it's difficult to extend to renters under the current structure, and it only applies to people over the age of 62. We'll continue to look at options for extending that to renters particularly.
Great. Thank you.
Councilmember Cooper.
I just want to clarify that also is provided to people who are disabled, not just over 62, correct?
Pardon me?
The people with disabilities.
Oh, yes, disabilities also. I apologize.
Thank you for that clarification. And then can we go back to the recommendations again for the rates?
This or?
Probably that one. So maybe I'm reading wrong. I'm looking at the Utility Advisory Committee's recommendations, and wastewater was to drop 2%?
It was to drop 2%, but then when you add the municipal utility tax, the wastewater utility pays that municipal utility tax for the LOT Clean Water Alliance. So it's not a 1% increase. It's the 2.2 you're seeing.
Okay. Thank you for that. Okay, I'm good. Anybody else? Thanks, Eric.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The next slide, I believe, yes, we accidentally did not include the park impact fee slide, but we're going to try to put it in the overhead projector. Oh, something's happening. Okay, this is also included in the staff report packet for you. And so sorry that it didn't get included in the rest of the PowerPoint presentation. Park impact fees are fees that are assessed to new construction, residential construction only, and they are to provide for new capacity park projects. For 2020, staff is proposing to freeze the park impact fees at the rate that they were last year in 2019, and basically back to the 20s. last year in 2019 and basically back to the 2018 rate. That frozen rate provides about a 6% discount from what the rate would have been if we had done the annual inflationary adjustment that's provided for in our ordinance, and it's about a 10.8% cumulative discount for the single-family homes. Following up on, I believe it was Finance Committee's discussion last week, we staff will be consulting with an impact fee consultant to look at other methodologies for assessing park impact fees in the future, so that's on our work plan to take a look at. But I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any about the proposed 2020 frozen rate.
Any questions for Laura? Councilmember Gilman?
So this may be a question for Finance Committee, maybe for Laura, I'm not sure, but the freezing the rates or having a discount run, is there a policy purpose to that? Is that just meeting your budget and having valuations going up, or is this to try to incentivize additional construction or development?
This is to help incentivize additional residential construction and to reduce any barriers with that the inflationary increase would have possibly had on the new construction of residential units.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Mayor Proton Bateman?
I'll just, you've heard this before, since you've heard the conversations around the Finance Committee. I think I'm really glad that we're going to be reevaluating this with a consultant and taking a fresh look. This is not the only area that we're taking a fresh look at, and the cost of the services and the impact on the community and thinking about the added benefit of dense development in our community and what type of impact that has. And I would, as you move forward in the process of consulting with a consultant, I'd be really interested to hear if those conversations are happening in other areas, not just ours, in terms of thinking about how you truly calculate the impact, not just the utilization of that specific development, but actually thinking about that holistically and how that fits in our community, if those conversations are happening in other cities at all with impact fees.
Councilmember Partially?
I just did a quick calculation, which is scary, not Nancy Lean, I apologize, but am I correct, and I'm trying to get the numbers, single-family to a SRO or single-room occupancy discount appears to be around 40%? Is that correct? Looking at the differences assessed?
Okay, yes. I can't do fast math in my head either, so I'm not gonna.
I can't either, I had a calculator.
Okay.
Okay, that's good, and that is similar to what we have done in the past, obviously, because it's being kept from 2019, but was it any different years before than that?
We've always had a reduced, actually, I should back up and talk about how these rates get calculated, just briefly. So the, they're based on the occupancy rate for these types of housing, and the occupancy rates for these types of housing are pulled from the American Community Survey, which is census-derived data. And so there are, I'm going to make up the number here, but for instance, it might say there are 3.1 people on average that live in a single-family dwelling. And what we're doing is we are calculating how much it costs for us to provide park land development, et cetera, the new capacity for the parks for that one person. So we would multiply the one-person park impact fee for the number of average occupants per dwelling based on the American Community Survey occupancy rates. And that's where you see those dwelling types. We're pulling the occupancy rates from the American Community Survey. Does that help?
Yeah, just one more comment, mainly because looking at the single-room occupancy as well as some of these new studio buildings, we'll be increasing the number of units per building than we've ever done before, which could add to the total amount of impact fee to a building that typically had 10 or 15 less units in the past, which could increase the cost and make these not pencil out. Does that make sense? So a building that used to have 40 units may now have 50 or 55 units, which automatically increases that number by 10 to 15. Have we looked at alternative ways to assess our impact fees on these kinds of multifamily units, buildings? As we go forward in our housing crisis, we are going to be making smaller and smaller units and more and more units per building than in the past decade.
I think I'm following you. So for our single-room occupancy and our accessory dwelling units, those are basically based on a one person is living in that unit, and that one person has an impact where it would cost us $2,233 to provide the new neighborhood, community park, and open space parks for that one person. So you're basically buying into the system, the park system, for that one person. And then as you go up the line, as you have a two-bedroom apartment or a single-family house, those on average have an occupancy rate that's based from the American Community Survey, and it's just an average, but it's the best data we have to be able to tell approximately how many people, based on the type of dwelling, might be coming to live in our city and therefore needing the park services. And then the idea is that we're not crowding out and making our parks more crowded for the existing residents, that we're continuing to add to our park system, acreage, and also facilities to accommodate the new population growth.
I appreciate that. If you could just talk with the consultant, that'd be great, because the, one of the groups that came down to talk to Mike Reed and us about single-room occupancy has been proposing to King County that they look at it a different way, because the amount of impact fees they're going to be paying on some of these buildings if they do it per unit as opposed to per square foot is going to make it potentially cost prohibitive, because the impact fees go up significantly.
I think it's an ongoing conversation that we are all having, so I'm glad you're hiring a consultant, and Councilmember Cooper?
Thank you, Mayor Selby. I'll just chime in a little bit here. I believe that in 2018, there was a recalculation of the park's impact fees, so it wasn't just the cost of living increase. And, you know, right after we had passed our emergency, Finance recommended that we sort of freeze everything while we were waiting for land use, which hasn't happened because of the workload continuing to snowball, to really look at impact fees and general facilities charges as a whole to make recommendations around how, if any, we might be able to stimulate the housing market through those mechanisms. So I just want to add that piece, and then also, I don't know how to make this happen, but I need to suggest that when we work with a consultant, we do it about all impact fees, including the school district. Everybody's at the table, every unit matches across every type of impact fee, and we use the same methodology and definitions across the city. And so I don't know if we need a referral to make that happen in before we get to this point next year, but that would be how I would like to see it happen.
Mayor Proton Bateman?
Just one more comment. As you can tell, there's a lot of interest in this topic. Just a reminder that we are allowed to make changes to reduce or waive impact fees when the certain types for public, broad public purposes. So if we were, for instance, to say we're in a housing crisis and housing affordability crisis, and we haven't seen any single-room occupancy projects in 30 years?
50.
We're really interested in having the catalyst for that type of development of the lowest-income housing that we could possibly get. Maybe we want to just reduce or waive impact fees for those for a time period to incentivize that, that is within our authority to do.
Councilmember Gilman?
I'm hearing the interest up and down the table. At this point, I haven't seen anything from academics or policy think tanks or even the National Association of Home Builders that says I can tie our reducing the fees and charges that we make to additional units. So if you have seen case studies or documentation that says this is impactful, otherwise, it's mostly, it's like, it's one of the few things we control in this construction economy, so can we please move this lever? But I think we need to know that it will be impactful and not just be a giveaway.
Mayor Proton Bateman?
I don't disagree with you, and we haven't seen that type of housing in 30 to 50 years, so my proposition would be why not try? Why not try to see if it would actually provide an incentive? It's such a limited, very specific, very tailored, I think anytime we do any kind of tax exemption or impact fee reduction, it has to be really targeted. It also says in MRSC's description of this that they should always be reevaluated, so we should always be reassessing to ask. Yeah, we have to legally. I'm not saying just give a carte blanche, open, you know, giveaway to someone. I think when it meets that public need and we have such limited options, it's absolutely worth our consideration, and there's so much interest here, I just had to throw it out there.
Sounds like a study session.
Councilmember Partially?
This is just FYI, the facts I quoted actually comes from a group that has been working with King County on what the barriers are for building some of these more affordable housing, and I can get you the reference. And it was sort of an RFQ by these groups, saying if you bought this property, get a property, tell us where you're finding the barriers to building these kinds of things. This comes from a gentleman who was looking at building an 11th SRO in King County out of Seattle, was looking at what the county restrictions were and what was going to be the holdup. And one of the things was the increased assessed impact fees for the increased number of units that he's fitting into this as compared to a same building that just has studios and one bedrooms, and then he found it actually did pencil out that it was going to be one of the reasons it was prohibitive.
More discussion to come. I think at this point, we're ready to move on. All right. Thanks, Laura. So we have, I think it's Mark Russell.
All right, good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Mark Russell, Deputy Director of Public Works, and I'm here to talk with you quickly about our transportation impact fees. As you can see on the screen, the transportation impact fees are relatively straightforward this year. There's going to be a $5 increase to a total of $2,787 per vehicle trip that occurs in the peak hour or the most congested time on our roadways. The reason this is only changing by that amount is we really just inflated the existing projects that are in our CFP or the Capital Facilities Plan for inflation, materials, labor, and what it costs to purchase right-of-way. We're keeping our projects and our rates fairly status quo, because as you know, we're in the middle of working on our transportation master plan. We anticipate adopting that in 2020, and with that master plan, we will be overhauling our impact fee program. It'll look much different than what we have today. It'll be based on system completeness, the transportation system that we're envisioning and how complete it is. And so next year, we will bring you a whole new impact fee program for transportation to review and approve. So that's why you don't see a lot of change this year in our transportation impact fees. So with that, if you have any questions?
For our viewing audience, can you explain what a peak hour trip is? Because earlier I thought we heard like $6 per, you know, round trip for residents times 9 points, and so how did you get that number?
So what happens is this is a trip that occurs during the peak hour in the afternoon, so between 4:00 and 6:00, there's a two-hour timeframe there. They take the hour that's most congested, and that is the number of vehicle trips that typically occur based on the development type, which varies from a single-family home to multifamily to commercial properties. And so the way we come up with this average vehicle trip before we put it into those different land uses is we estimate the cost of our total impact fee eligible projects. Thurston Regional Planning Council anticipates and models what the growth in Thurston County, in particular Olympia, is over the next 20 years. And so we have that number of trips that occur during that peak hour time, and you basically divide the two numbers, total project costs that are eligible for impact fees, divided by those new trips coming into Olympia or being in Olympia, and that's how we get the 2,787.
And that's across all new households?
That's the base number, that's the average, and then that goes into a formula depending on the type of land use. So it'll, and so that depends on how many trips that particular land use occurs during that peak hour. So if it's a commercial, fast-food restaurant, it's going to be different than a single-family home, so then that gets calculated into a table.
So that's all just an average that we're seeing right there? We're not seeing the breakout like, okay. Councilmember Jones?
Thanks, Mark. So $5 is about 2/10ths, less than 2/10ths of a percent increase. And so I'm not sure how that relates to the cost of labor, materials, and real property and their rate of increase in inflation.
So what I did, I actually added an average of 5% increase to the project costs between the labor, materials, and right-of-way acquisition or property acquisition. And so once we inflated those project costs by that amount and then divided by the number of trips, it only resulted in a $5 increase when you spread it out over all the projects and all the trips.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Mark?
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
And now Jennifer Pretty, Assistant Superintendent, Olympus School District.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Selby and Councilmembers. This presentation relates to the district's Capital Facilities Plan and specifically the school impact fees. Year after year, we come and talk to you about the school impact fees that we're proposing, and we propose impact fees for single-family homes across the district, multifamily homes across the district, and traditionally have proposed a zero impact fee in residences in the downtown boundary. And as you know, in 2018, the board began to debate whether or not they wanted to continue the 100% exemption for impact fees in the downtown boundary. And so in fall of 2018, ultimately made the decision not to impose an impact fee or request an impact fee for 2019 in the downtown boundary. And they've gone through this debate again and have ultimately this year or this cycle proposed an impact fee on multifamily homes in the downtown boundary. And I won't go through my whole presentation, it is late and you have done this many times, but I will maybe jump back a little, jump back and forth a little bit, but I'll get right to it. The board believes strongly that schools contribute to the community's well-being. Adults in our community use schools for their running tracks, for their gyms, for their fields, they rent the theaters, organizations rent the church, rent the school, and we actually hold church in our schools. They walk their dogs onto school property, and they, their organizations rent space in order to operate the organization. Ultimately, our students are given an excellent education. They have rich experiences, as you know, and many of you have experienced firsthand. We have a 92% on-time graduation rate, which is a very high rate and very exciting for our community. Ultimately, the board feels that contributing to the community is a holistic process, that our students are successful in part because we have such a fabulous community and our schools contribute to such a fabulous community. But the board ultimately feels that downtown housing does contribute to the need to improve schools, add to schools, provide capacity to serve students. Right now, we have 115 students who have a residence downtown in the downtown boundary. And so the board feels strongly that it is time to embark on an impact fee for downtown construction. They have settled on phasing in an impact fee and having an impact fee that is proportionate to the impact fee that the city that the city charges for parks on downtown construction and proportionate to what the city charges for transportation fees on downtown construction. And they have settled on a proposal. I'm going to use the little red dot. That for single-family homes, district-wide, the fee would increase next year to $5,200. Actually, yeah, just about $5,200. That's about a $200 increase over the fee last year. And they have settled on a multifamily home, non-downtown rate of $2,000. That's a $500 decrease when you compare last year to the new proposal. And then they are proposing a downtown impact fee for multi-home residences, new construction. And that's listed in the far-right column. And they are proposing that that impact fee be phased in so that the first six months of 2020, there would be zero fee, so 100% discount. And for beginning July 1, so the second half of 2020, that the fee would be about $1,600. That $1,600 is based on a 32% discount to the fee that is generated by the calculations that are required in the Growth Management Act. So with that, if you don't, if you have questions for me, I'm, I'll just stop there.
Thanks, Jennifer. I'm pretty sure you've been prepared that we do have some concerns and questions regarding the downtown change. So, so Councilmember Jones, did you want to start?
Well, just a couple background pieces. So when is the fee assessed? Is it with certificate of occupancy or permit approval? When, what happens? When do I know that I'm on one side or the other of July 1?
That's an excellent question.
Oh, we have Leonard Bauer.
Leonard.
Interim Director, Community Planning Development.
Leonard Bauer, Interim Director, Community Planning Development. The, our code provides for a potential for a deferral. So the first, the normal time it would be assessed to be the time the building permit is issued. If the deferral is requested, we have a process for that. And then it can be deferred to the time of final inspection. But we would, the July 1 date, I think we would count the time of permit issuance so that we could, you know, use that as the dividing line.
Some uniformity.
Yeah.
Okay. And then my other question, Jennifer, thanks for your presentation. Councilmember Cooper suggested the need for more uniformity, even across jurisdictions, including the school district. Do you have a response or a reaction to that?
I think that the Board of Directors of the Olympia School District would agree with that approach. I think that they felt that the zero impact fee for downtown was out of step with what the city was, the city policy. And so when they debated this issue, ultimately, they settled on proposing an impact fee for the schools in the downtown, the impact fee in the downtown boundary to be discounted at 32%. And I believe the city discounts transportation 20% and parks 40%. I'm sure I have that wrong. It's been a couple weeks since I had to look at that and repeat it. So I'm sorry to bollocks that up. But they chose the midpoint between those two discounts of the transportation and the parks' impact fee. They also were mindful that the city would like us to look at the specific types of housing. And they are certainly open to do that, doing that. And they want to do that in step with the city and not be different or somehow out of step.
Thanks. And then just one final question. You talked about phasing in. Is July 1 of 2020 the end of the phase in? Or should we expect the impact fees in downtown to continue to grow?
The impact fee proposal is one year at a time. And so the proposal is simply that the new impact fee in the downtown boundary for multifamily residences would begin July 1. And we, the board was being responsive to the concern that there are projects in the pipeline and that they didn't want to impair projects that were either very close to pulling their permit, if that's the jargon that I can use, throw around some jargon, that they wanted to make sure that those projects that had received financing under very different assumptions, that they would not be harmed.
Great. Thanks very much.
All right. Councilmember Partially followed by Mayor Pro Tem Bateman.
So based on your comment to Councilmember Jones, I'm assuming the school board would be open to a joint meeting that Councilmember Cooper was suggesting that we potentially do on impact fees.
Yes, they, they would. And in fact, you have a joint meeting in February, which is maybe good timing for looking at this in the future. It's just bad timing for the fact that this, this timeline is a December decision, so.
One last question, maybe it's for Leonard or the permitting part. Is July far enough out for any of the current ongoing projects? Because it would be hard, I can imagine, thinking, oh, I'm going to be great. But guess what? July 1, I get my occupancy permit. And you, because you have 80 units, you, $81,000 you weren't counting on.
$1,600.
Yeah, that is certainly the concern that we raised to the school board when we went before them, trying to line out what would be a good advanced time period. We feel like July 1 should capture most of those that are in the pipeline at this point. I'm sure there are projects out there in someone's mind's eye right now that they'll have to look ahead to that. But we want to try to make sure this information is out there for anybody looking ahead.
Mayor Pro Tem Bateman.
Thank you, Mayor Selby. Thank you for coming to yet another city meeting for the City of Olympia to talk about this issue. I think it's worth noting, and I'm sorry if this is redundant, that the exemption on those impact fees were based on the public good of having development downtown. And the council at the time made that a priority. As we've already stated, it's worth reassessing that. And I applaud you for thinking outside of the box and saying, hey, we should take another look at this. I do think that it's also worth noting that in the conversations that the Finance Committee has had with the school district regarding the topic of impact fees, it has felt like we're talking about a tax. And the comments about paying everyone paying into a quality education and everyone paying into these excellent schools and everyone utilizing these resources, when in fact, impact fees are different than levied property taxes. And they're based on new development and their ability to help pay for new or expanded public facilities that will directly address the increased demand for services created by the development. We have a very specific criteria in that RCW that is applied to us when we make and assess impact fees. And I appreciate that the school board went back and in trying to make a more equitable assessment of a good option for an impact fee for downtown multifamily homes, that they came up with a number of 32% based on the utilization and the impact of transportation and parks in our downtown. And I would also add that those are very different. The utilization of parking and transportation and the utilization of parks is different than the utilization of schools and those school facilities. And while the school might, district might think that everyone benefits and that this is something that everyone should pay into, we are, as the governing body who makes these impact fees and passes them here, we are bound by the RCW and that criteria. And I have yet to see that data that says those specific types of development have that impact on the school district. And I'm especially interested in that conversation happening in February to discuss single-room occupancies and the impact that those have on the school. We have the ability to make exemptions. That is discretion that we have in our authority. I think it would be in our best interest for us to work with you to assess the impact of single-room occupancies on the school district and studios. And I think that we are mutually aligned in that interest. And I think it would be very beneficial for us to have that conversation. And I, I don't think that I'm speaking out of turn here when I say that I think this council is very interested in that. We want to work together with you to come to a positive conclusion. And I also think Councilmember Cooper's comments about looking at all of these together and making sure, we're having this discussion more than just this narrow scope. But since you're here and we're talking about this, we're really delving deeply into it. So please do take that back. And we are very, very interested in having that conversation. Thank you.
Councilmember Cooper followed by Councilmember Gilman.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Mayor Selby.
Jennifer.
Sorry, Jennifer. Did you want to? May I just, I don't know if that was a question and if I can respond or not. But I, I just want to make sure you're aware that we are very mindful of what is the appropriate use of the resources and what we can spend the impact fees on. We don't consider it a tax. We, we are very careful to spend the money on adding resources to a school based on new development. And so I don't want there to be any worry about, about that. We don't consider this a tax. We are mindful of the difference between schools and parks and transportation impact fees. I think what I wanted to convey is that the school board is wanting to be aligned with the city with regard to the discount that is applied to downtown fees, whether it be downtown transportation fees, downtown park fees, or downtown school impact fees. And so they are, the major policy lever that a school board has with regard to impact fees is the discount rate, right? So for a decade, we have been discounting the downtown fees 100%. And so the board felt that that 100% discount was not warranted. And they wanted to align what that discount would be for the downtown residences to what the city's discount is. And so in choosing 32%, it's not that they wanted to claim that school impact fees were the same as parks or the same as transportation. They're just looking for alignment. Sorry.
No, thank you for that explanation. Councilmember Cooper followed by Councilmember Gilman.
Thank you, Mayor Selby. I just want to say, Jennifer, thank you for being the messenger in this.
Oh, of course.
Mayor Pro Tem Bateman alluded to this. Like, the first time we heard this, the three of us on the Finance Committee practically jumped out of our chairs because we were so concerned about every penny that it costs to develop. And I think it's important to lift up the comments earlier around, like, we need to really analyze the effect of push and pull on impact fees and what that really has on the housing market, as well as equalize this policy jumble across all of our impact fees. So I think, you know, that being the most important part of this conversation and then a, you know, a nod to the school board for hearing us and making some changes. I do hope that in February, we can launch a conversation that will take some consultants and staff to really dig in deep so that in time for the 2021 budget, we have a uniform impact fee methodology and some understanding of what discounts, what impact discounts could have on the housing market. Because it's important for us to, to really do that work. And I'd be looking to Councilmember Gilman to help us with, if that can't fit in the work plan of land use, do we need to find another place for that work to, or at least the analysis work to happen to bring, bring, based on workload?
Thank you.
I will make sure I take that message back and the message from Pro Tem Mayor Bateman also.
Oh, and, and actually, I have one, one other comment is, to me, the most important part of this is to our council is, is if we feel like the data and the numbers here are defendable, it will be the City of Olympia that will have to defend this, this methodology. And so I just want to make sure before we have a final action that we feel comfortable with that methodology from our, from our council.
Councilmember Gilman.
Thank you, Mayor Selby. I, I just want to respectfully differ with Mayor Pro Tem Bateman that we, we had this exchange once before. I believe that the RCW that enables these impact fees speaks to broader community benefit and not a literal, if you don't have a kid in school, you don't have value of having quality schools. I, I think that there's workforce development, social quality of life, residential real estate value. There's a number of positive impacts from schools. And I also, I, you know, it also comes down to, I want the kid who's taken care of me downtown to give me the right order and the right change. You know, that's a, that's a positive impact. So, but I, but I, I mean, silliness aside, I, I think that there can be a broader reading of the RCW. And we, we went back and forth on that once before. But I, I don't believe it's as narrow as a specific school pupil impact coming from a downtown residential unit.
All right. So just one more takeaway. What I was hearing earlier when we were discussing this, and I've had conversations with some of the board members as well, it was mostly around studios. And the fact that we're trying to create as much inventory of that type as possible and keep it as affordable as possible. And generally, that's like that first person that has their first job or is, you know, working at Macy's for a while anyways until they close. You know, it's like they, that's, they're low-resource renters. And so that studio space, that single-room occupancy space needs to stay as affordable as possible and as lowest barriers as possible for development of those units. And so that's where I would like to have, that's kind of where I put plenty my flag, is on the SROs and the studios assessing a fee like that. You know, I don't know whether we can, can line item studios. But I just think that as we're talking about that scale of 15 units of apartments, you know, that's going to create quite a, quite a load for that person that's developing that to finance. So that sounds like you've heard this from us. So anything else before we move on? Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Very briefly, a development services fund that the City Council has adopted previously and is set up to fund the services we provide through plan review and inspection of new development proposals. The council's adopted an 85% cost recovery policy so that the fees charged for those services would cover 85% of the actual cost of the cities providing those services. We're actually not quite there, but we're getting closer each year. And each year, we analyze the fees and bring you proposals for adjustments to those fees to get closer to that target. And so, as well as looking at other city policies in alignment with those and costs that come to the city from other consultants or other services that are provided. So just real quickly, we have a few proposals that have come through Finance Committee and forward to you for changes, excuse me. First of all, the, under planning review, this is our land use review. We have something called variances or reasonable use exceptions that we are proposing an increase, and then comprehensive plan amendments. Both of these are some of the lower cost recovery that we experience right now. And so there's a significant change. And I'll note that the comprehensive plan amendment amount is at midpoint between what Tumwater and Lacy charged for that same service. Under our engineering plan review, we, that's where our landscape, review of landscape plans comes forward. And again, that's one of our lower cost recoveries. So we're proposing an increase there. And then there's some other fees that look at the actual contract, in this case, a contractor that performs work for the City of Olympia to do televising or, you know, literally taking pictures of the insides of the pipes for storm and surface and sanitary sewer. They've raised their fees. And so we're, this is just reflecting that cost to the city of contracting for that service. And I'll skip down, similarly, the Thurston County auditor has raised document recording fees. And so these reflect the actual cost to the city of recording documents related to permits and inspections. And then back up here, we have actually proposed a little bit different approach to temporary certificates of occupancy. So the, once all of a, a project is totally completed, a building contractor requests his final, his or her final inspection. And that usually involves making sure that every single requirement and every single piece of the code has been inspected and met prior to issuing occupancy to that building. Occasionally, we do. we do get requests for a temporary certificate of occupancy, which is occupying the building before every single last one of those requirements has been met. And what we do then is a special inspection. Right now, we have a charge of 225 regardless of what the building is. And we're expecting for all of the health, life, safety components having been met and that that building is safe to occupy. There may be a few outstanding pieces such as maybe some additional landscaping or some detail work that's not germane to life, safety, or health that still need to be done, but we can allow for temporary occupancy of the building due to a, an urgency on the part of the occupant. What we're proposing is dividing that into different types because it, it's probably pretty intuitive that it's a lot bigger inspection and a lot longer process for inspectors for a large commercial building than it is for a small residential building. And so it's really just breaking that out and trying to reflect that reality while keeping the cost relatively low for this kind of service. So with that, I'll stop and take any questions you have.
Questions for Leonard. We're getting tired. Councilmember Gilman.
So Leonard, could you just say a little bit more about the comprehensive plan amendment? Could, could you offer a couple of examples of what kind of a, a situation would have somebody coming in to require a comprehensive plan amendment on the proposal?
Yes. Each year, we come before you to, to schedule that annual process. It is probably most of a year-long process. I mean, this is not even close. I think our cost recovery on that is 1.3% at this point with that 320 amount. And, and it'll still be below the 85, significantly below at this point. But that is a process. The most recent one actually was an internal request last year to amend our comprehensive plan to match the greenhouse gas emissions targets to what you adopted previously through another process. But we also have applicants that come in, and actually, the deadline is this Friday, for applications for the 2020 round. And that might be a property owner looking at a comprehensive plan amendment to change the land use designation on the property to allow more density, for example. And we have had some of those in the past. So that is a significant process that takes most of the year to do the analysis and the public process and the hearings and everything that go into that.
Good. Thank you.
All right. Anybody else? All right. Thanks, Leonard. Is it Max?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council. My name is Max DeGarnett. I'm the City Staff Liaison for the Parking and Business Improvement Area. I have to apologize for my, my voice. It's not contagious. I was spending Sunday with 70,000 other screaming fans at CenturyLink watching Sanders win. So, so yeah, so this is going to be hopefully the shortest part of the presentation. The PBA's budget is mostly the same from the year previous. We're forecasting about $100,000 in assessments. There'll be continuing funding beautification projects downtown like the flower baskets in the summer and historic photos activating vacant storefronts. In addition to partially funding the Clean Team and Ambassadors, PBA will continue funding extra alleyway washings and the mural protection program to abate graffiti. And then also there's the significant downtown holiday marketing push known as Twinkle Fest, which any merchant owners watching should note that the registration deadline is November 22nd and the decoration deadline is November 30th. So that's my presentation. Happy to answer any questions if I can hear them. It's mostly ringing.
I just have a quick one. Administration does not include your staff time, correct?
That's correct.
Yes. So I just want it to kind of be on the record that the city also supplements the PBIA collections with your staff time, which is about how many quarter time towards PBIA? Or is this probably not a fair question to ask?
I don't have it calculated, but it's, it's not insignificant. We, city staff time is considerable for support of PBIA. But no, it's not being taken out of the administration.
Yeah. It's a, it's a nice match. Right. So, yeah. So, any other questions? All right. Thanks, Max.
Thank you.
So the next part of this presentation, Mayor Protem Bateman's going to take it.
Thank you, Debbie. And Max, we might be tied for the fastest presentations. Although you were very, you were fast. So thank you. So I get to chair the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee. And we met on October 23rd to review proposals for the 2020 funding cycle. And we made our recommendations, which you can see here. We also have a chart of the 10-year history of our funding for the Lodging Tax Advisory. As a quick primer for the viewing audience, LTAC is paid by people who stay overnight in local hotels, motels, beds and breakfasts, and other lodging establishments. These funds can be used to promote tourism events, locations, and activities for the purpose of attracting visitors to our area. We do have projects that have applied outside of Olympia, but they're regional and we think that they're coming to our area for beds. They called it Heads in Beds is what the RCW. We want people to actually be staying the night here. Under Olympia Council-approved guidelines, only nonprofits or government agencies are eligible to apply for these funds. And for 2020, the committee recommends allocations in the amount of $405,000 and $923. The committee reviewed 16 requests for 2020 funds, one more application than we received in 2019, and we were able to actually fund all of them, which is notable. The total amount of funding was 449,000, which is 43,000 more than the previous year, or more than the total that funds that were requested. I'm sorry. The requests include some known and beloved community activities such as Lake Fair and Harbor Days. And we have also supported funding our brand-new Olympia Lit Festival of Books, which was on our recommendations last year, but they had to push pause on that for their own reasons. But we're really, really excited about the Ole Lit Festival and the potential that that has to grow year over year. And then also the Lake Fair runs. And with that, you have all of them before you. Most of them are ones that you know. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
This is a feel-good story when we have enough money for all their requests. That's a fun committee. How do you get on that committee?
Yeah. It's very fun, actually. You make people happy.
All right. Any questions for Mayor Protem Bateman? Thank you for reviewing all that.
I think the wrong presentation got in here tonight, which might speak to why the parking isn't in here. The reason I say that is because I just want to wrap up with saying that this is all part of our budget process. So next week, there will be a public hearing. The Finance Committee is meeting on the 20th. Yeah, you've got it there. Do you mind if I can speak to it? Yeah. So on the 19th, we'll have another public hearing on the operating budget and the CFP. So people can make comments on these fees and rates as well. Finance Committee meeting is on the 20th. The very next week, we will come back before you with budget balancing, with approving the budget on December 10th. So that's it.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right. Thanks, everybody, for staying so late. And with that, I'll just give a very brief mayor's report. I was able to do a site visit of the Skookum Chuck Wind Farm yesterday afternoon. It was quite, quite the escapade to get out there and then up to where these, these, the, the, sorry. The turbines, they had, yes, thank you, are placed. And there will be a ribbon cutting in the spring. It's very, very treacherous access. That's why they don't let, there will not be regular tours of this. But anyhow, I will have more information when the ribbon cutting is, and I will share more pictures at another time. All right. I will go to Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor Selby. Just one item, and I wanted to provide my comments on the legislative agenda since I missed last week. So I have a couple of comments. Under the homelessness, state resources for mental health, housing, chemical dependency services, I'd like it to be more direct that we need state leadership on this.
Councilmember Cooper, I think our interim city manager was speaking. So I don't know who's taking notes on this as far as the council, the...
Oh, I should start over.
Yeah.
Sorry. Yeah, you're right. I was engaged in a conversation with the...
No worries. Sorry. I was just trying to make you understand everything.
I'm good. Keep going.
I will give interim city manager Bernie my notes after this also. So, under resources for homelessness, housing, mental health, and chemical dependency, I'd like it to be more direct that we need state leadership and state help. I also like a bullet there that says all cities should have a shelter plan in order to get 1406 money or recording fee dollars spent in their jurisdiction. I'd also like to see the removal of the 1% cap on property taxes put front, center, at the top. I don't, after eight years of doing this, I don't believe that there's anything that we need more importantly. In fact, it would better help us address housing and homelessness. It would help us with climate change and a myriad of other things. So to me, that needs to be the first thing at the top of the agenda. I also would like to add to the bank, to the back, to the bank, create a state bank or authorize county-level public banking option. That's something that when we looked at trying to find a, a new bank for the City of Olympia, it was nearly impossible and our choices were very limited. We have a county, a county treasurer who is sitting on a cash balance of around $6 billion every single day. There's no reason that we shouldn't be able to have a public bank at the county level at least, if not the state level. California has recently authorized the ability to create local public banks. And then my last comment is that I'd just like a better understanding of the regional agenda development process. I think for the last two or three years, I've asked to have council members be a part of that and not have it be a staff recommendation. And so I'd like to know how council will interact in that before it comes to us in its final draft. For me, it's important that R101 interchange be there next to and equal to any freeway projects in Lacey or in Pierce County as well. I don't want to really participate in a regional agenda with any cities that don't have a plan for sheltering the homeless.
That's, that's a lot to try and squeeze onto a page and a half, basically. And I think we could have a discussion, maybe agenda setting if you'd like to come. And we can talk about what goes where. And I think the, a public banking option is kind of new as far as going to putting...
Well, we asked for it to be on our legislative agenda last year in the middle of the year when we did it, and it didn't end up there. So it, it just was an oversight six months ago, or a, a year ago.
Okay. I, I just don't know if one council member can come forward and just...
These are just my comments.
Comments. Okay.
And I will provide them to the, to the interim city manager. And we can do action to amend the final document when it's in front of us. That's how this works. So.
All right. All right. Councilmember Parshley?
I, I will say, I counted a lot of nods to moving the 1% to the top.
Just a comment. When I was in Washington DC, I managed to hang out quite a bit with our own Senator Bob Hasagawa. And he was talking about a state bank option. And he would like to actually come and do a study session for us in the, sometime during the session. And he's given me his contact information. So I'd like to put that on the potential for agenda. He was thinking that.
Mayor Protem Bateman.
Senator Hasagawa's been working on a state bank for quite a while. Great. Great topic. I think I also had point of clarification questions in terms of process. Some of the comments that you made, Councilmember Cooper, had been alluded to in the last week's meeting discussion. For instance, Highway 101 funding and our, Councilmember Gilman mentioned our conflict in being a part of a regional set of priorities when some of those might edge out our priorities. And so I, that point is well taken. I think you saw a straight across the board nod on the increase in the property tax, ability for us to actually levy that, which I completely agree. We also had a conversation last week, like we did the year before, about narrowing our scope of our legislative priorities as much as possible and having a thoughtful and meaningful conversation about the appropriate size and scope. And I think it's worth noting, we might have legislative priority items that we say, you know, if these come up and we see movement on them, we can support them and we can lend our voice to them. Are we going to have our lobbyists work them hard and do a lot of legwork on, for instance, a state bank when, you know? So that's the conversation that we would need to have as a, as a group. I appreciate that you have a lot of your voice to lend because you weren't able to be here last week. So I'm not sure if agenda setting would be the appropriate time or if you just want to...
Yeah, I had the opportunity to watch it and then make my comments.
You had more of a benefit than we did.
Yes.
So, yeah. And, and to me, that's what a legislative agenda is, is a set of guardrails and you, you deploy resources based on what you have. I think we've talked enough about most of these things that are on the front, and I need a 1% cap removed as the, the sole priority of the City of Olympia.
Well, it sounds like interim city manager Jay Bernie would take that input. And then you're working directly with our lobbyists so you could make that assessment in, in your coordination with Deborah, determine that.
Perfect.
Okay.
That's exactly what I was going to say. If I can get that from Councilmember Cooper, then Susan and I will work directly with, with Deborah. Susan is your legislative liaison for this session. And then this will come back to you in December. Susan will be bringing your legislative agenda back to you for final approval. I think it's on December 10th. And so you'll have one more crack at this to...
She's nodding.
We'll, we'll take some changes and some recommendations. We'll give you a revised draft, and then you have one more chance to make final changes before, before it's completed.
All right. Thanks for clarifying that process. All right. Is that what you've got? Okay. Councilmember Rollins?
Thank you. Just one item to report. I just wanted to say that it was a great conference last week, and Carrie was a great driver. And I got to learn more about opioid use disorder treatments in the state and how they're working to close the gap between when they meet people in ERs or jails and getting them to the medication assistance treatments and on a plan. The decolonizing systems was a great, a great workshop as well. And the big takeaway for that for me was they, they framed it as, you hear about housing first all the time and we do story first. So it's all about who are you, where are your people from, what matters to you. That's really helpful for any of us in our, in the city role when we're interacting with folks on the street. Eviction reform and just cause. And we saw Ted Kelleher's presentation, which we all saw a year ago at that Thurston Thrives Forum. And then the Lehigh unveiled some of the, their legislative, their legislative agenda for 2020. And I'm happy to get the copy of that to Susan and maybe she can scan it and just send it out to us. That was it.
Thank you. Question, Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Councilmember Rollins. Was that the Low Income Housing Tube or the Housing Alliance?
Alliance, excuse me.
Okay.
Yeah, Lehigh. Thanks. All right. Mayor Protem Bateman?
Nothing to report.
Councilmember Jones?
Nothing to report. Thank you.
Councilmember Gilman?
Yesterday was the inaugural runs of the one, InterCity Transit's new express bus from the Martin Way Park and Ride to Capitol Mall. 15-minute frequency, zero fare, both doors open up, it curtsies for 10 seconds at each of its five stops. You either jump on or you don't, and it heads on down the road. And there's another one 15 minutes behind it, if you dawdled. So I'm, I'm super excited. I've ridden it twice. And I was especially impressed that there are enough people who just generally wait on Martin Way or on Harrison in the West Side and just take whatever bus is coming, that they just took to it. I met a half dozen folks who, not knowing quite what it was, just stepped on and, and rode it. So, related to that, on November 20th, InterCity Transit's going to have a public hearing on our strategic plan and budget proposal for the next year. And that will include a proposal and a discussion of doing a six-month pilot project to have a zero-fare system for all of the fixed route buses, to not collect fare as you, as you board the bus. So that's, that's a major innovation. And it's, it's been an exciting conversation so far. So that, that's coming up on the 20th. And then I just wanted to say that I was, I was listening hard to each of your, your concerns and input about what do we do about incentivizing development. And we have a new city manager, a new assistant city manager, and a new CP and D director as of, oh, just hours ago. So, so I'll start by knocking on that door tomorrow and work my way along. And I'll, I'll meet again with Leonard to see what we can do as, as resources are shifting a little bit to reprioritize. Before I come to finance and say, where do we find another chunk of resource somewhere else in the city or another budget, we'll, we'll just, I think it's important to have that conversation about how, how important these priorities are to us with the leadership team that just came into place. So, so thanks for the input tonight.
Yeah. Thank you. Any questions for Councilmember Gilman? Councilmember Parshley?
I have nothing to report.
I have nothing to report tonight.
All right. Interim City Manager Jay Bernie, as of last Friday morning, right?
As of last Friday morning. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have just one quick report. As has been mentioned, I just want to welcome, there's a new face at the staff table, it's not new to you, but I do want to welcome Keith Staley as our new interim assistant city manager. And I want to welcome Leonard Bauer as the new interim community planning and development director. And I just want to thank them for jumping in in the interim period. I'm very thankful for their, to have them.
All right. We are too, like I said last week, we have a deep bench of talent, and so we are going to be navigating the ship steadily as we move forward, and I want to thank everybody that has stepped up. Yep. All right, with no further business before the Olympia City Council, we're adjourned.